Good. Good. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand and join us for the Pledgeable Allegiance.
Pledgeable.
United States of America, two, three, republic, which is them, one nation, under God.
All right. Good morning, all. We do have a quorum present with all five commissioners in attendance today. First order of business is we need to amend the agenda before us. And add a real estate section under the executive session portion of the agenda as well as. Adding item nine under the consent agenda to include ratification of the letter sent on behalf of Sweetwater County, the City of Rock Springs, the City of Green River, and the Airport Board in response to the comments made by the Mayor of Caspers. Um, relative to the airports throughout Wyoming. So with those amendments, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve the agendas amended.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's and a. Motion's unanimous. Next up, under tab B, we've got, I believe it's four public hearings today. From the Planning and Zoning Department, first up being the approval of Resolution. Twenty-three oh nine zero oh one, a variance for the minimum district size for commercial to be less than ten acres. With us to present today is Megan Tumer, and good morning, Megan.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, just a little bit of background, the first two public hearings will kind of go hand in hand, so I will try not to. Uh, repeat myself too much with this, but the first one we have here today is for a variance. Um, we're just a little bit shy of what the minimum district size should be for this property. Um, the current property owner is Gerald Donegan, um, and we had a few last minute changes late last week. Alan Allred was the original applicant. And has chosen not to proceed, but the property owner himself, Mr. Donegan, has chosen to proceed with this uh, application. The legal description is nine point eight nine acres within the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section seven township eighteen north range one oh five west. Uh, basically a little property just west of Volsec Trailer Court. Um, currently it's vacant and is owned agricultural. It's also located within the growth management area and the highway overlay district. Brief background, Mr. Alan Allred uh, is a Realtor on behalf of Nav Star Real Estate. They were interested in purchasing this property. Um, with the intent to develop it for retail sales of a service, power sport, RV, an automotive part, uh, retail shop. They're no longer moving forward with the, this application for a varying amount of reasons. Um, but Mr. Donegan would like to continue with the zone change from agricultural to commercial, which is the next public hearing. But we need to have the variance to allow for the next public hearing basically to happen. Um, as you can see, there's commercial property within the area. Um, rocking and rolling rentals is that little bit of strip that's in front of Volsec Trailer Court. We also have um, commercial and recreational services just to the west of it. And just to the east of the Volsec Trailer Court too, as well as commercial, that's just on the other side of the interstate, so. As you can see, there's quite a bit of terrain um, out there. I did just want to pull up uh, a Google view just to kind of give you more of an idea where we're at. Just off of. The. Foothill Boulevard, um, just to kind of show you roughly where we're at there. And the terrain that exists north and west of it, all that's owned by the BLM, so gaining just a little bit more ground. Um, is not extremely feasible at this time. Um, Mr. Jim Zimmerman properly posted public notice. And the variance request that is being requested here today is from Sweetwater County zoning regulations, section five B ten. Which states the minimum district size for commercial is ten acres. Um, we'll jump right into the three um, criteria for a variance. Uh, basically, are there any special circumstances or conditions um, which are peculiar to the land or the building in which the variance is sought? And do not generally apply for the specific neighborhood. Topography is something that um, makes expanding this parcel a little bit um, harder to do, to do. We are just on the, the cusp, we're at nine point eight nine acres, so depending on how you look at it in round, we're, we're almost there. So the parcel itself um, is as large as it's probably going to get also with having BLM land bordering to the north and west. Expanding or increasing this parcel size is, is not a option at this time. Criteria number two. Um, basically are, is the variance request the minimum adjustment um? To accomplish the purpose in which they're trying to get after. Uh, staff does find that this is a very minimum request as we are nine point eight nine acres, just barely shy of that require ten acres for a minimum district size. Of commercial zone property. And last but not least is. Is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning resolution and will it not be injurious? To the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public uh, welfare. Staff doesn't find that there would be any problems or detriment to the public welfare with this. Um, granting of this variance would be in harmony with the zoning resolution as um, proximity to IAD uh, for commercial properties. Is very desirable. It would help hopefully the land to eventually get developed. Um, it also blends in with the other commercial and commercial and recreational service on property that's within the area already. Uh, we did receive public and agency comment back, the first being from Y dot. Mr. Kaufman goes into a little bit more detail on what uh, the applicant should. Uh, consider as far as a, a site plan, geotechnical study, drainage study, traffic study. All that Y dot will need to review as it's accessing uh, proposed access would be off of Foothill Boulevard, which is a Y dot road. Um, they would have to apply for any new utility construction within the right of way, going through the proper permits with them, as well as the proper, proper access permits. Um, the other five agency review that we got back, uh, most of it was no comment from Pioneer Pipeline, All West Communications. West Side Water and Sewer District, uh, Mr. Donegan himself. Um, thinks it's a great location for this commercial use. And uh, Kathy Green, City of Rock Springs planner stated they have no concerns, um, but that the property is located within the city's one mile uh, boundary. At last week's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Resolution twenty-three. Dash oh nine dash zero dash oh one with the above staff conditions. Uh, the staff condition that was placed on this is basically for the next public hearing. The zone map amendment to be approved as well, just to make sure we're tying all of this together. That's all I have. Um, Chairman West, and I also do have, I believe it's Robin Gilman. Um, who is Gerald Donegan's daughter um, on Zoom as well, if you do have any questions for her.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions for staff commissioners in regards to this variance request? Any questions for the applicant? If not at this time, I'd open up the public hearing for Resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh one. A variance for the minimum district size for commercial to be less than ten acres. This time, if there's anyone online or in the audience who would like to speak to this variance request, now would be the appropriate time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and Commissioners, what's your pleasure on Resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh one?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero dash zero one for approval of variance, the minimum district size for commercial.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit slow this morning, but I, I would like to ask um, the petitioner. If they are still intending to use the property for the same intended use as Mr. Allred was considering? Or are you looking at another commercial use potentially for it?
Another use. Probably another use, a retail use.
Okay, just, I, I just assumed that it was going to be for something different, but I wanted to make sure, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's and a. Motion's unanimous. Next is the approval of Resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh two, zoning map amendment from agriculture A to commercial B. Requested by, uh, I believe it's Gerald Donegan, handed back to Megan.
Thank you, Chairman West. We have the same property owner, Mr. Donegan, uh, same nine point eight nine acre parcel located just west of the Volsec Trailer Court. And we will just jump right into. The review criteria for the zone map amendment, uh, first being, is it consistent and compatible with the current resolution and comprehensive plan? Um, as always, Sweetwater County encourages growth and development to occur in orderly manner. Uh, this location um, and zone map amendment were, would allow for more commercial uses. And for the vacant property to be. Uh, developed in a commercial matter if this zone map amendment was approved today. Criteria number two is the proposed zoning suitable for the existing topography and creating buildable lots. Proximity to IAD is always advantageous. Uh, topography is something that will need to be taken into consideration, um, drainage. And uh, just design will need to be taken into consideration during both the construction and design phase. To make sure that drainage is handled correctly, um, that it turns into. Just a, a property that can be developed. I know a lot of people are scared and worried about topography and things like that. Dirt can always be moved, it's just the amount of dirt that people are wanting to move and just where the placement of something takes, but there, there is ten, ten acres out there and. Construction and design, there's, there's always, in my opinion, uh, not a whole ton of limits when it comes to that, as long as people are willing to go through the proper channels and go through the proper design process to get to. Um, what they're proposing at the end of the day. Criteria number three is the proposed zoning compatible with existing and allowable uses of adjacent properties. Uh, as I stated in the last public hearing, there is commercial property just to the northeast and uh, just on the other side of the interchange there down by Curl Jacks. As well as commercial and recreational service. Um, zoning just to the west of this property and just on the other side of Volsec Trailer Court, so staff does find that it's consistent with uh. Current zoning and allowable uses that are already out there. Criteria number four, proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities, including roads, drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer. Police and fire protection exist or will serve to exist at the time such ref- at the time such facilities are needed. Uh, currently property's vacant right now. Um, when it comes time to actually getting something permitted on this property. All of those things will need to be taken into consideration and we'll go through the prop- proper channels uh, within the land use department or. Uh, require drainage uh, study as well as bringing the water and sewer. Um, into the area and working closely with Y dot to make sure we're meeting requirements with them as far as access and. Um, everything that Mr. Kaufman has stated in his comment form as well. Criteria number five, the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, health, safety, or welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. Staff does not find that this would take place, and we have also not received any comments against this uh, proposed zone map amendment. And last but not least, does this request conform to all applicable provisions of this resolution? With you approving the previous public hearing, uh, staff does find that this is. Um, conforming with all applicable positions of the Sweetwater County zoning rights, right? Excuse me, resi- solution. We received the exact same five comments as we did in the last public hearing. From Y dot Pioneer Pipeline, All West Communications, West Side Water and Sewer District, Mr. Donegan himself, and also the City of Rock Springs City Planner. Um, all of which had uh, basically no comment or concerns. At the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Recommended approval of Resolution twenty-three dash oh nine dash zero dash oh two with the above staff conditions. Uh, the conditions basically are for the previous public hearing to. Uh, be approved as well, just making sure we're tying things together again. That's all I have for this, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions for staff commissioners? I had one, Megan, it's more out of curiosity, on the sanitary sewer side, is that all septic on that side? Isn't there an issue with? Being able to tie into the.
So currently, right now, um. It's not within, as far as I understand, it's not currently within West Side Water and Sewer District. How their district is working is as new properties get developed, they need to be. I don't know if annexed is the correct word, but basically brought into that water and sewer district boundary. Um, I do know with us working on the Volsec subdivision. Uh, two years ago, that, that, that's what currently serves that area. Um, and with the comments that we received back from the Water and Sewer District, there. Didn't seem to be any problem, but it is a discussion when that property gets developed, what all would need to take place. As far as just design and also um, being actually officially adopted within that uh, district boundary as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing on Resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh two. Zoning map amendment from agriculture to commercial. Requested by Gerald Donegan. This time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to this zoning map amendment, now would be the appropriate time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-three zero nine zero, Z zero. Uh, Z oh zero two, excuse me.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's and a. Motion's unanimous. Item three under the public hearings for the planning and zoning today is approval of Res- Resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh three. A variance for private road access road. To be fifty feet in width and for well and septic to service lots within the Chenoweth subdivision as requested by Joseph Chenoweth. We've got Megan again, and we'll hand it over to her.
Thank you, Chairman West. Um, as with the last public hearing, this public hearing and the next one will kind of work hand in hand. Uh, at the meeting last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve. With their P and Z authorization for the Chenoweth subdivision to move forward to final plot. Which it's one of those things, just with how regulations are, you guys actually won't see the subdivision itself until it comes to there. But we need the variance for these to be approved here today. As well as the zone map amendment, since these are all kind of tying together, so I'll try not to repeat myself too much with this. And give you as much detail as I can. Um, the property owner for the proposed Chenoweth subdivision is Joseph and Teresa Chenoweth. Trustees of the Chenoweth Family Trust and Joseph Chenoweth himself. Um, if I go over to. The aerial view, it's kind of hard, a little bit hard to see, but you can see where the road runs uh, kind of in a northeast direction. That's the road to the Stansberry Mine. That little parcel of land Mr. Chenoweth bought from Aggie Grazing just a few years ago, and he owns title just to himself by that. On that portion of hundred foot strip of land, all the rest of it is owned under the family trust. The proposed Chenoweth subdivision is approximately forty-four point two five acres. Currently it's zoned R two SF, single family residential with a lot size overlay of thirty-five acres, and it is also located within the growth management area. Current infrastructure to the property, Fire District number one is the responding agency, Rocky Mountain has power out there. And the existing parcel has an approved well and septic permit. It is also located within the, the North Sweetwater Water and Sewer District boundary. More commonly known as the Reliance Sewer District to a lot of people. And access is also provided off of Wynton Road, which is the county road sixty-six. The proposed Chenoweth subdivision is five lots with the largest slot um, going to be retained by Joseph and his wife being around twenty-two acres. Um, access for proposed lots two and three will be by Chenoweth Way, which is uh, the reason for. The first portion of this variance is for the request for that private road easement to be fifty feet within the growth management area typically. Um, per what our regulations are, it needs to be sixty feet uh, with this currently only serving two properties at this time. Staff finds that it's reasonable for the request to be dropped down to fifty feet. Um, lots four and five are proposed to be accessed off of Stansberry Way, which is that uh, strip that I described just a little bit earlier. And then um, the other half of this variance request is for all lots within the proposed Chenoweth subdivision to be serviced by well and septic. Instead of serviced by North Sweetwater Sewer District for sewer and City of Rock Springs for water. Um, as you can see, the property's roughly two miles north of Reliance. Um, it is currently surrounded by BLM property. There is one other property that is divided out there. Right around thirty-five acres as well, um, and then the rest of that section of land is currently owned by Aggie Grazing. Here is a view of the proposed Chenoweth subdivision. Um, you can visually see a little bit better just the details that I was talking about earlier. It was properly public uh, posted for public notice by Mr. Jim Zimmerman. And the variance request for the first portion, which is the fifty ac- fifty foot access. Easement width um, comes from. Sweetwater County zoning regulations, section four C, five B four. Um, basically saying the property's not subject of a subdivision permit, which it is, so we need to request a variance for that. And then going into just a little bit further in that same section, um, requesting that same variance. Uh, for it being sixty feet within the growth management area. Um, there's a lot of places in our code where it duplicates themselves, so we're just trying to make sure we've got everything covered there. And then the growth management area, um. Any parcel that's located within that and is within a water and sewer district. Um, typically, we like to see them hook up to proposed uh, water and sewer instead of going on well and septic. This property's two miles from the nearest public water or sewer source, and staff finds it um. Finds that the proposed request for this exception isn't um. Is. Suitable for what they're trying to do with the property out there. Um, so here's the two tables that the variance request for well and septic is coming from. And we'll jump straight into the three um. Review criteria for the variance. Are there any special circumstances um, or peculiar for the land in which this variance is sought? Uh, just a little bit of background, back in two thousand and four, when Mr. Chenoweth and his wife bought the property and originally tried developing. They did have to request a variance to have well and septic out there. Um, at that time, uh, the Board of County Commissioners and. Planning and zoning felt it necessary to attach conditions that um, if the property were to. Ever be divided, that they would have to hook up to uh, public water at that time, and. Um, this is one of those things that staff has reviewed and has looked at now. There's not been any intent from the Water and Sewer District. Um, to increase the size or capacity of the sewer in the area or water. And staff finds it a little bit unreasonable to hold the Chenoweth to that condition that was made. Almost twenty years ago. Criteria number two. Is this the minimum adjustment that will accomplish the purpose in which they're seeking this variance for? Uh, staff does find that when we're talking about the private roads within the gross management area, normally they're sixty foot width. The purpose for this is so that it's um, just trying to keep with a master transportation plan. If someone did have a private road and wanted it to be turned into a county road later on down the road. That it would be a little bit easier to do so with a sixty foot width. Um, staff finds that since this property is only servicing to this proposed. Variants will only be servicing to lots at this time, that fifty feet is uh, plenty for a private access road. They're also. Proposing to install the appropriate fire um, turnaround for a, a, a fire apparatus at the end of Chenoweth Way as well. Um, so they're trying to do what they can to meet, meet the requirements um, to keep. Uh, future residents safe within this area, and staff does find that the request for well and septic. To service the lots within the Chenoweth subdivision is not unreasonable. The lots are above the two acre minimum size for lots to be serviced by well and septic within the growth management area. And since this location is in a semi-remote location, staff does find that um, going to well and septic, as long as it's approved by the appropriacy. Appropriate agencies um, is not the biggest deal. Criteria number three. Um, basically is, would this variance be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to anybody in the neighborhood? Staff finds that since the. Um, Mr. Chenoweth and his engineer, Mike Glock is working with us to meet all the requirements for fire protection and things like that. Jumping down to fifty feet isn't. Um, a huge concern, and also with well and septic, they would need to be approved by uh, the appropriate government entity anyway to be approved. Uh, so staff does not find this being detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of residents within the county. We did receive agency comment back. Um, All West Pioneer Pipeline, City of Rock Springs, and Y dot all had no comment or concerns. And staff did um, recommend approval of this resolution as well as the planning and zoning in their meeting last week. With uh, following four conditions. The variance for fifty foot width for private access road easement to be applied only to Chenoweth Way and not to Stansberry Way. Lots one through five within the Chenoweth subdivision will be allowed to be serviced by appropr- approved well and septic permits. The P and Z authorization for Chenoweth subdivision to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which it was last week. And then the resolution for zone map amendment, which is our next public hearing to be approved as well. Again, just trying to tie everything together. That's all I have for. This public hearing, Commissioner, and I do have Mr. Chenoweth and Mike Glock uh, in the room as well, if there are comments for them.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff? On this variance, Commissioners? I have one question, Megan, so I understand the addition of the Chenoweth Way and the Stansberry Way, but the current lot. Lot one, or what's proposed to be lot one, that access just comes off of. Wynton Road, and that'll just remain, so that's not considered a private road?
Correct.
Okay.
Lots two and three will be accessed off of the private road, which will come off of Wynton Road. And that's what the variance is for, and then the two northern lots, four and five will be accessed. And that's what the variance is for, and then the two northern lots, four and five will be accessed only off of Chenoweth Way. Stansberry Way, excuse me.
Any other questions commissioners? Any questions for the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing for the approval of resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh three. Variance for private access road to be fifty feet. And width and for well and septic to service lots within the Chenoweth subdivision. As requested by Joseph Chenoweth at that are at this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to address a governing body in regards to this variance. Now would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move the approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero dash zero three for the approval of. Variance for private access road to be fifty feet in width and for well and septic to service lots with proposed Chenoweth subdivision.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
It's unfortunate that we have to have property owners come before us with. Variances on this on the septic water, public water and sewer. About fourteen years ago, two. Water and sewer districts were allowed to expand their boundaries to a level. That they can't service and and because of that. Landowners are having to come in and get these variances and I think I don't know if there's a way we can clean that up, but I think it's something well worth looking into.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it seems kind of silly to make a requirement if it can't be followed through with, so. She's part of the process of what's so difficult dealing with governments, unfortunately. Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. The fourth item. This morning is the approval of resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh four, a zoning map amendment from single family residential. Lot size overlay thirty-five acres to single family residential lot size overlay four acres requested by Joseph and Teresa Chenoweth. And we'll turn it back to Megan.
Thank you, Chairman West. Little bit of background on this that I didn't quite cover in the previous hearing. Going back through records that staff has just with the growth management area when they changed some zoning. When that came into play. The correct boundary lines for the zoning in this area are a little bit off. The way that we've chosen to look at this is because it's going into a subdivision, we want to make sure those boundary lines match up with what is being proposed within the subdivision. Also, because there was a lot size overlay of thirty-five acres. We need to drop that down so that the property can actually be developed as a subdivision. So the. Thing that we are changing here is basically the lot size overlay of thirty-five acres dropping down to the four. And also just cleaning up the. Boundary that's going to be described for. For this own map amendment. And I'm going to just jump straight into the review criteria. And kind of hit the highs. On here. The proposed zoning is compatible with existing allowable uses within the area. We're dropping the or requesting that the lot size overlay be decreased to four acres. Which matches the minimum lot within the Chenoweth subdivision. Also kind of putting. Layer of protection on if someone did want to subdivide these lots in the future. They wouldn't be able to just go through the replat process and do that, they would have to come before the Board of County Commissioners. And it would have to be looked at as a little bit more in-depth. Just trying to make sure we've got, just looking forward. Ten fifteen years down the road, so. That is something that staff was glad to see that the applicant was on board for as well. Since we're going through the major subdivision process. Adequate public facilities, including roads, drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer. And police and fire protection are currently being reviewed and discussed. We've had quite a few discussions around just private access road easements, who's going to be maintaining them. Who's also going to be maintaining fire tanks. And fire protection such as that, most of that will take place detail wise in this next phase, which is the final plat stage. Staff does not foresee that this amendment will adversely affect adjacent properties. If anything, it's helping us to clean up our records and match to surveyed boundary line, which we appreciate. And this request conforms with all applicable provisions of this. Current zoning resolution. We did receive no comment from All West Pioneer Pipeline, City of Rock Springs Planner and Y Dot. They have no concerns with this request for zone map amendment. And at the September thirteenth planning and zoning meeting last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this own map amendments with two. Conditions, those basically just tying everything together. Making sure that we've got the process all tied together, as you can see in your packet. That's all I have for this, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions for staff on this resolution commissioners? Any questions for the applicant? Hearing done, we will go ahead and open up the final public hearing today for resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh four. Zoning map amendment, single family residential. Lot size overlay thirty-five acres to single family residential lot size overlay four acres requested by Joseph and Teresa Chenoweth. This time, if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address a governing body in regards to this resolution. Now would be the appropriate time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero dash twenty-three dash zero. Nine? Dash zero dash zero four. Really long on here. Or approval of a zoning map amendment from single family residential. R two S F lot size overlay thirty-five acres to single family residential R two S F lot size overlay four acres.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh nine zero oh four by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing then all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Megan. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming over. I would like to recognize Representative Wiley, who has joined us in attendance this morning. Good morning, Representative. Next up on the agenda is county resident comments and concerns, and at this time, if there's anyone. In the audience, doesn't look like there's anyone online, so in the audience that would like to address their governing body on any issues, now would be the appropriate time. Morning, Mr. Devis.
Good morning commissioners. Dave Devis, Sweetwater County Assessor. I just wanted to make you aware of a few things. The legislative session. Well, stuff is starting to churn. I sent you the acquisition value study that was a result of House Bill one hundred from our last session. It was. Part of a bigger picture property tax reform. According to the people that know, we're going to have probably somewhere around nineteen property tax bills in the next legislative session. Those topics are going to range from an optional refund program at the county level, homestead exemption. Tax deferral program, tax caps. Assessment rate reduction, monthly payments. And then this acquisition value, which is really just a mirror of the Prop thirteen tax structure in California. The study that I gave you and I did in the email I sent, I did kind of summarize that it had some hurdles to get through. It was not. When I talked to Representative Jennings in the last session, who was the big pusher of this. He thought it was reform and and we had a long discussion that it's not, it's it's actually a new methodology. It's not reform of any kind, it's just a new way to tax property and basically what it does. Is it taxes the property at the at the value that it sold for? And then at the point where it sells again, that value is then readjusted at that new sale price. Now in between, you may have some sort of inflationary factor, two percent, three percent, something like that. But it really takes the fairness and equity out of the property tax system, at least in my opinion. But it eliminates, you know, all the ratio studies that we talked about in our appeal hearings, all those kinds of things are just out the window. So it it it's really a problem and it's being presented as as reform and or. Property tax reduction, and again, it's really not. Who it really hurts are new homeowners, which are usually families starting out. They're the ones that bought it at the sale price, so they're being taxed at that higher level for a longer time. So just just some I things for you to be concerned, and I do think Mr. Reiman is going to be talking to you in your association meetings next week at Waco. So if you do have any questions or concerns on any of this stuff, if I have any history from the last session, I'll let you know. One new thing that's out there is a ballot initiative that was certified by the Secretary of State. The initiative is called the People's Initiative to Limit Property Tax in Wyoming Through a Homeowner's Exemption. And now homeowner's exemption is already on the books. It's in statute, it just has not been updated. So this is something new and different, and according to this resolution. It would exempt fifty percent of the fair market value of a home for taxation. Residency requirements would be you have to live in the home for six months the prior year, so they're trying to eliminate like the vacation rentals, that kind of stuff. And then like only one year of residency. Now that's very inconsistent with the other statutes, the veterans exemption residency requirement is three years. Property tax refund program is five years. But this ballot initiative, if it actually gets to the point where it's on the ballot, it would only have one year of residency. Now they do have some hurdles to get through on this, they have to have twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty signatures. In order to get this on the ballot and it has to be by percents by different counties. But if someone asks you to sign something. Just kind of make sure you read it first. In my opinion, this is not. Good tax policy and there's no. Backfill provision in this either, so the county would lose. Roughly, I did the numbers this morning, we have roughly three hundred and five million dollars in residential. Property valuation, so immediately we lose a hundred and fifty million dollars with no backfill. So that's a big deal. So it's something where, you know, if someone asks you to sign something, see if they know the ramifications of what it does after. But I again, just wanted to let you know. This is the kind of stuff that you're going to be talking about next week, this is the kind of stuff that's going to be coming up in the session. And if you do have any questions or want to discuss any of these things or go into any detail, I'd be happy to go into it as as far as I can with you, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Dave. Any questions commissioners? So on that House Bill one hundred that was passed for this study and all that. I understood that properly, so basically whatever they buy it at, whatever the values at that time, that just remains flat with the exception of any inflationary increase, but.
Correct.
Until it's sold and then it's reevaluated at that time.
Correct, and if you look at this over a ten-year cycle for Sweetwater County. The consulting firm that did the work. We would actually have lost over ten years, about forty-five million dollars. So in taxation, because what it does is it caps caps the increase. And if you do that over time for ten years, it's almost like compounding interest. Well, what they did is they calculate the revenue loss over that ten-year period and it was forty-five million dollars. Really hurts the schools. One of the things that happened in California when they did Prop thirteen is they they reduced revenue from property taxes. But they had to increase revenue in other places, so they reduced the tax and then created just dozens of other taxes to fill the need. So it's not, you know, if that's what you have to do, you really didn't do anything. You know, leave the property tax system alone and leave it and don't do the other. But it's just, again, that's just my opinion, but if anybody wants to come visit and talk about this, I'd be happy to show if you have any questions about the study itself. The group that did the study, that team consulting that did that, they're very, very well respected, they do a lot of education from the Department of Revenue. For the county assessors and appraisers in Wyoming, they're a very, very good group of consultants and. I think they did a very thorough job, I think it was very well done, so. The answers are there now, whether the legislature will listen. And see that this really isn't the answer, we'll we'll find out, but. That will find out in February, yes, when the session starts.
All right, well, thanks for bringing it to our attention, Dave, we'll keep our eye on it, yeah, kind of alarming numbers you shared there, so. As we have time, we'll try and sort through that study you sent over, I didn't have time to read all the fifty some pages, but I'm sure there's some good info in there, so.
Yeah, the a lot of the stuff at the end is just the the credentials of the people that did the study and. They're they're quite quite impressive. But it is, it was very well done, like I said, it was very thorough. The middle like ten or twelve pages kind of hit to the meat of the matter and and they were, like I said, very well done and it's. It just doesn't seem like it's the answer, there are places that have actually put this in place and then pulled it back. Because they didn't, the revenue wasn't doing what they were supposed to, I think. For some reason, Montana or South Dakota or somebody comes to mind. That they had done it and then actually backed off of it after they had put it in place, so. California is the only place that's doing it and keeping it in place, and I do have some other articles, if you are. Extremely interested, there was the forty-year anniversary of Prop thirteen just recently, and there was a very good article written about it and it talked about the pluses and the minuses. With that tax policy, so if anybody's interested in that, let me know, because I do have that information available.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dave.
All right.
Appreciate it. We're still under county resident comments and concerns. There's anyone else in the audience that would like to address governing body? Representative Wiley, good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I just could like to come up and and make a report on a couple of issues. One with some new new and enlightening developments is. There will be a letter drafted in support for an extension on the time period for the public comment on the upcoming RMP. That's going to be signed by the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate, there will also be similar. A similar letter drafted and signed by multiple representatives and senators. So we can be a part of the oncoming discussion when it comes to the RMP with Department of Interior and BLM. We do this so we have future options to move move forward. Going on into this process. With with that being said, any any talking points that you guys might have or in any kind of language that you would see fit to. To include into these letters, that would be much appreciated, you can contact me via my Y Y ledge email. Or just give me a phone call. You're going to be the the spear tip at this and I think we have. A widespread. Multi-county support, I know I know Fremont Fremont's legislators and their county commissions working on this, I've I've heard. Similar similar. Similar points of support from you and a carbon. Lincoln, everybody that's going to kind of get the the widespread effect of of this RMP that's coming, so I encourage you to. To work with the other counties and please give us any input that we can do to help. And 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 on that that point, if you have any questions of me now. No, no problem.
Thanks, Representative, I know. We have a letter prepared doing the same that we're going to discuss here momentarily, asking for an extension and obviously we're. Working diligently with the process and trying to sort through the details, our land use departments working, you know, daily trying to. Figure out how to provide, you know, substantive comments and and things of that, we've also, we're a party to the CLG Coalition of Local Governments that. Have some of those neighboring counties and they too are working through it, so. We don't have all the answers, but we're seeking to find those and, you know, we'll continue to put up the fight and figure out what's best, so we appreciate your effort and support in that.
Absolutely, and I I think, you know, that support, uh, House, House and the Senate will come and we're we're going to help try to throw our hat in the ring with. With you guys and and get on top of it. The second, the second point I'd like to discuss is I'm heading to Cheyenne tomorrow for a special. Special called meeting for Corporations Committee and we're going to be dealing with a lot of the Rocky Mountain Power rate rate hike things that are coming now, we can't. Specifically tell the PSC what to do or how they should vote. But we can look at what we can do moving into the future to help change their guidelines. There's there's several several bill drafts coming tomorrow, I believe, four or five. And it's going to give us a a complete, you know, array of options of what we can do. To counter some of this subsidizing the West Coast states and their energy policies. Again, if you have any questions or concerns about that. I'm 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 open, like I said, we have the the special meeting tomorrow and we'll see. We'll see how many of those bills move forward, I I believe we have one more meeting coming up in October and then the PSC is going to meet in October as well.
Yeah, no, no questions, but lots of concerns relative to that, as you know, I think we all share on that, any other?
Uh, you might check the agenda today, item C eight. Where we will be ratifying our coalition comments on Rocky Mountain Powers Integrated Resource Plan, which addresses those a bunch of those issues.
Excellent, and and I'll I'll review that tonight before I before I attend the. The the committee meeting tomorrow.
Do you want me to hit print so you can pick it up on the way out?
Awesome, yeah, thank you, thanks, Mitch.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, I just want to thank Representative Wiley, it's great to have somebody down in Cheyenne that's fighting to bring. A lot of the resources that are developed here in Sweetwater County back to Sweetwater County through Cheyenne. A lot of the, a lot of the state gets a free ride based based on the income provided right here. And I know, I know Cody Catch has a lot of heat back there for working so hard to bring some of it back here, but I want to know, I I appreciate it. And I know, I know Cody Catch has a lot of heat back there for uh working so hard to bring some of it back here, but um I want to know, I I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Richards. And and we have a, we have a pretty good coalition of representation down there right now. We're all, we're all working hard toward that point. All of us are in support of you. It's just a matter of taking one step at a time.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
The letters in the printer as you go out.
All right. Thank you very much.
The door is locked, but we'll get it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Representative. We appreciate you coming over and uh keeping us up to date on what you have going on on the east side and we'll continue to uh work together to fight the fight with some of these very important issues. So thanks for all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Still under county resident comments and concerns. Is there anyone else that'd like to address governing body? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close county resident comments and concerns and move right along into tab C. Tab C is the consent agenda. We have nine items this morning, first being the approval of the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. The approval of the county vouchers warrants, EALs and Commissioners' report. Approval of the monthly statements, approval of bonds. Uh, ratification of draft comments on the Bridger-Teton National Forest proposed fee increase. Ratification of draft comments on the USFWS Notice of Revision to the Bison and Elk Management Plan for the National Elk Regu, I believe that's refuge. Yeah, the ratification of draft comments on the Pond Field CO2 Sequestration Project. Ratification of the CLG comments on the Rocky Mountain Powers two thousand twenty-three IRP that Commissioner Toman just spoke to. And ninth would be the ratification of the letter we amended uh at the beginning of the agenda here in response to the Mary Casper's comments relative to the airports throughout the state of Wyoming. Commissioners, if you don't have any questions or comments on the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for approval.
It's Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion is unanimous. Next on the agenda is Commissioner comments and Commissioner Tomlin's up first.
This month I attended the Federal Partners Meeting on on September sixth, along with Commissioner Slaughter. So I will defer to him if he wants to add more to that. We're going to go to a monthly meeting with them. September seventh uh to the Chamber of Commerce Enterprise Meeting. And listen to the updates on what the colleges doing with their work programs. It was, it was exciting. Some of the programs they're offering for training people for industry uh specific jobs. And I also provide an update on the BLM Resource Management Plan to that group. Uh, we did Dry Creek Trona with uh Mr. Brigham, pre-decisions still, but they're progressing. Attended the YWCA Recognition Banquet, uh Ms. Bos and her team. It was great to hear about all the great things they're doing there and appreciated attending that. September fourteenth, attended the Airport Board Meeting on Zoom. The uh new contractor is on site working on the new terminal. So hopefully we'll get that done now. Um, we discussed a letter from the Casper Mayor declaring there should only be two airports in the state, which we are writing a letter on today. I met with Senator Kolb last night, tried to share with him some of the things happening with the BLM uh Resource Management Plan. Shared notebook on a desktop guide on cooperating agency status, what that means as to be a cooperator. We are the voice of the people at the table during the planning process before these plans go public. We have participated as a county and conservation district for twelve years on this Rock Springs BLM Resource Management Plan to come up with a balanced alternative D, which DC has decided to weigh the heavy hand and say you're going to take the preferred to be alternative B, which would be the heavy conservation alternative. They've sidestepped our local leaders. They've sidestepped our local field manager. They've sidestepped the state uh Director of the BLM and chosen to put the heavy hand of DC on this BLM Resource Management Plan. The most important thing I can tell the public is that go to the hearings and ask the important questions. How is this going to affect my job? As well as my hunting and fishing access is going to be a huge thing. If you work in the mineral industries, it is going to affect your job. So ask to see the maps that will show the difference between the different alternatives, how much less land will be available for coal development, oil or gas development. Under each of those alternatives, alternative B is conservation, which is going to be very restrictive and limiting. Alternative uh A would be leave it as it is. Alternative B would be the extreme conservation alternative. Alternative C would promote uh more resource development of our natural resources. Alternative D is the one that we worked on as cooperators with the BLM for twelve years. For them to come out, they hadn't even given us a heads up. Uh, we met with Kimberly uh Foster, the BLM Field Manager on August seventeenth, uh BLM and DC was not to release that until Au- August eighteenth. They decided to release that. So we're in the in the cooperative meeting that we had not met for a year, over a year to hear that DC is uh saying you will take alternative B as the preferred. Now, this does not mean it's a done deal. It means that they have a ninety day, we have a ninety day comment period or more if we can get an extension of time. But when you go to the public meetings, Rock Springs one has been moved to the Holiday Inn Ballroom. And that one will be next Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, three to six P M. There's one tonight at the Lyman Branch Library. Three to six P M, September nineteenth. There'll be one next Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, in Big Piney at the Marbleton Town Hall, three to six P M. We have copies in the courthouse of the notices of where these meetings are going to be located. The important thing is to ask to see the maps and talk about how it will affect your life. Your access, your jobs, your future. The sad thing is from the day uh President Biden got in office, he, the first thing he did was put up moratorium on all oil and gas uh lease sales. So right there, we lost a a year of lease sales that affect our income in this county and in this state. So uh then we had to go through the battle of the court battles to try to get some of those opened up again. So what they do is is our, then the next thing that came out was the thirty thirty, which we opposed there thirty by thirty, which meant thirty percent of the land would be in conservation by twenty thirty. So uh they're pushing that agenda and everything they do and trying to lock up the West, our economies, our way of life. They're not uh uh concerned about our way of life and our history and our culture and our uh local economies. The next thing they came out with uh a public lands rule, which said they would lock up land for conservation. The governors in the West blasted that public lands rule and opposed it. So the uh that one wouldn't involve any process of public input because that was strictly a rule. So they're pushing the agenda to lock up uh the public lands as much as they can during this administration. So it is important that you fight for your access, you fight for your jobs, you fight for our way of life and our local economies. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. We appreciate all your work and background on that. I know it's been a lot of anxiety for many people because it's tough to dissect all of the ins and outs of that plan. And so anyone that's got background on that is certainly valuable and we will uh continue to support you and learn from you and attack this as a team. So thanks very much for your work and your details on that. Any uh?
I I would add one more thing if I could. Alternative B, the socio-economic, they are to analyze what are going to be the economic and social effects if they choose an alternative. The study for alternative B was done in two thousand sixteen, so that cannot be current information as to the effects of our what's going to happen to our tax base and what the values of those assets are. Um, not assets, but of the money we would get from being able to lease minerals for development. Alternative D was analyzed in two thousand twenty-two, which tells me the local BLM officials and the state officials were probably anticipating that we would they would be allowed to select alternative D. And the local BLM manager and the state director are the ones who are supposed to select that preferred. And instead, they received the heavy hand of Washington on that alternative. So um, I just wanted to add that one point.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Toman on her report? If not, Commissioner Richards, you're up next.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. My last couple of weeks been relatively light. But the meetings I've attended have been very informative and important. On the eleventh and twelfth, the state legislatures joint ag committee, as well as the Select Water Committee met up in Pine Dell. Select Water had representatives of the BLM there to discuss the Rox Springs Draft Resource Management Plan. And I'd say the committee members gave them a pretty thorough grilling. In the end, the committee decided to send a letter to the BLM on behalf of the committee requesting an additional hundred and twenty day extension to the comment period for the draft RMP. I think it was a good move on their part and want to thank Senator Cold for his action there. Um, and it looks like the the entire Senate and House have have uh decided to follow suit. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on from that for now, but I'm gonna circle back to it a little bit later in my comments. I had a SCORC motorized subcommittee meeting scheduled for the eleventh, however, not enough members could attend. So we're rescheduling that for a later date. But on the twelfth, we did have a meeting of the full SCORC steering committee. And we discussed several of the projects we've been working on. Matthew Podolinski from the National Forest Foundation gave his presentation about the NFF and some of the resources they can provide to national forests and adjacent lands. He seemed excited about the prospect of the collaborative the Commissioner Slaughter's been working on and seemed to think they might have some access to additional resources. Um, as that effort moves forward, Commissioner Slaughter, if you don't already have his com- his contact information, I'm happy to provide that to you. The most notable part of the meeting, though, was a presentation by Lauren Hazard from the BLM, who gave us some invaluable information on the Rock Springs Draft Resource Management Plan. She walked us through the process of accessing the documents online and then gave us some insight about how the document is organized. Most importantly, she explained to us what they consider to be a substantive comment and how to submit one. I emailed com- copies of the information sheet provided uh to all of you, and I'm happy to discuss it, discuss it with you if you if you have any questions. On the thirteenth, I attended the Monthly Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where in addition to the hearing that we hearings we addressed earlier, we also had a robust discussion about the RMP. Uh, that board is concerned about the RMP and is looking for ways to have a positive effect on the outcome of the process. Later that afternoon, I joined Commissioner Jones in receiving an update from Representatives from Frontier Carbon, who told us about the local carbon sequestration projects they're working on here in Sweetwater County. Um, and then also on the thirteenth, I remotely attended the Monthly County Commissioners Association update. We heard from Senator Bresso, as well as representatives from the rest of our Washington delegation. They're all very aware what's going on with the RMP and are keeping a close eye on it. On the fourteenth, I attended an SEDC Advisory Board Meeting, where we also received updates from Frontier Carbon, as well as updates on some ongoing projects that the SEDC is working on. One of which is the launch of their new website, which is now live, uh but still a work in progress. You can view it at sweetwateredc.org. And it's focused on providing information for site selectors who are looking to for resources and data that could encourage them to locate their new businesses or move their existing businesses here to Sweetwater County. SEDC also had a robust discussion about the uh Rock Springs RMP, and they're also looking for ways to have a positive impact on the process. After that meeting, I met with the land use, with Land Use Director Brigham, and he gave me an update on the progress he's been making on working his way through the Rock Springs RMP, engaging its possible effects on our community. Uh, and it doesn't look good. Problem is that the plan is just so large, there's no way he's going to adequately get through it in all of it in the next sixty days. And I think we probably need to have some discussion about how we can get him some resources to to do it more effectively. I'm sure you noticed the overarching theme to every meeting I've been a part of over the last couple of weeks, and that's concern about BLM's proposed draft, the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan and the negative effects it'll have on Sweetwater County. What has become very apparent is that the ninety day comment period is not enough for us or anybody else to review it properly. And provide meaningful substantive comments on behalf of Sweetwater County. And and that's going to be a really important part of it. Um, I asked Eric to draft a letter similar to the one by the Select Water Committee, requesting a hundred and twenty day extension in the comment period. Eric, he mailed you copies of that and they and we handed them out this morning. Um, I hope you'll, Mr. Chairman, I hope you'll indulge me in allowing me to make a motion that this board authorizes um you to sign that letter and send it to the Rock Springs Field Office, requesting a hundred and twenty day extension. Um, and so without with without objection, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Mister, we do have a a motion to approve the letter as prepared by the Land Use Department and addressed to the BLM's local field office requesting an extension on the public comment period of an additional hundred and twenty days to allow for adequate review time to offer substantive comments and authorizing the chairman to sign, which was made by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I don't also encourage encourage every board, organization, um, any individual out there that that's concerned about this process to uh make that same request to the BLM. Uh, going forward later tonight, I plan to attend the Community Fine Arts Committee Meeting and tomorrow I'll attend the SCORC State Park Subcommittee Meeting. On Thursday night, I plan to attend Inside Connections Annual Fundraiser. And next week is going to be a busy one for me. On Monday, the twenty-fifth, I'll attend the Combined Communications Joint Powers Board Meeting, which reminds me that I forgot to relay to you some information from their last meeting, which is that the whole dispatch center staff was trained and certified recently to provide services for missing children and to coordinate any cases with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. They're one of only two certified centers in the state and one of only eleven certified nationwide. So congratulations and thank you to Rick and his team for the work they do uh did putting in into that. And uh taking a step to make our community a little bit safer for our children. After that meeting, I'll head to Casper, where on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, I will sit through a full day of mandatory public officer training. Once I'm done with that, I'll head over to Riverton, where the State Shooting Sports Complex Task Force is scheduled to meet on the twenty-seventh. So I'll be spending the better part of Wednesday with them as they develop the criteria for what they'll be looking for in a suitable location for for a complex. Also, on the twenty-seventh will be the BLM's Public RMP Meeting, um and that has been moved to, as Commissioner Tobin said, to uh the Holiday Inn Banquet Room from three P M to six P M. I won't be able to attend that since I'll be on the wrong side of the Continental Divide that day. But I know some of you will be there and I want to encourage any member of the public that is concerned about the RMP to be there and make your voice heard, whether they listen or not. Uh, another important meeting that I'll be unable to attend because I'll be out of town is the Sweetwater County Rock Springs Green River Growth Committee Meeting. As you know, that committee has been working to address some of the anticipated impact that upcoming industrial projects could have on our communities. And they're doing some important work. So I hope in my absence, one or two of you might consider dropping in and keeping tabs on them if for no other reason to keep them from assigning Sweetwater County. Any extra work if we aren't there to prevent it? If you're interested, let me know and I'll get Representative Larson to uh reach out to you and get you an invitation to the meeting. I think that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work on uh some very difficult items there and for requesting the extension and for Eric for preparing that for us. I did receive a invitation to that growth committee. It happens to be on my birthday, so uh I'll do my best to attend, but I just want you to take note of that, Commissioner Toman.
What exact day was that now?
Um, any questions or comments for?
Mr. Chairman, I I believe there's another birthday this week. Is that? Is that last week? Well, happy birthday, Commissioner.
Oh, we'll have people related. Any comments uh for Commissioner Richards' report? If not, we'll move right along to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September fifth, uh after our uh last commission meeting, I met with Christina Marshall for the afternoon to discuss her job responsibilities so I could understand uh my role as her liaison. And great conversation. She's uh very knowledgeable. On September sixth, attended the monthly meeting for the Wyom Hospital, Suwar County. Uh, happy to report July had a positive bottom line of approximately two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. They discussed a policy for leadership, fulfilling absences for vacancies of senior leaders and developing senior leaders. Uh, FY twenty-four performance improvements in financial uh patient experiences and medication history. Irene reviewed some positive comments they received, such as great culture they've created at the hospital. Uh, critical access is still moving forward, still waiting on the state. Um, Clifton Larson Allen completed the annual audit of the finances at MHSC. Uh, they received a clean and successful audit report. Uh, they continue to interview and hire new doctors amongst other positions. I received a recognition from the American Hospital Association for a seventy, being a seventy-five year member. Uh, Care Jackson was nominated for very prestigious Norman S. Holt Nursing Excellence Award from Wyoming Hospital. Kara Jackson was nominated for very prestigious Norman S. Holt Nursing Excellence Award from Wyoming Hospital Association, so that's pretty exciting. Uh, they reproved approved replacement of backup power for technology and data storage. Total of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, and uh they're also continue to have more and more positive comments from doctors about operating with the Da Vinci robot, so that's been a a huge success in that addition to the facility. September eighth, uh I was on several calls with the hospital on a variety of topics, including one with John De Leon, Commissioner Slaughter and Jeff Phillips wrapping up the MOU uh between the county and MHSC. On Saturday, September ninth, I went to, actually, I went over on Friday and stayed the night, but Saturday, September ninth was a uh in Saratoga was a meeting for Wyoming State Snowmobile Association. Full day meeting. Uh, one of the topics I covered, of course, was the BLM RMP. Uh, and that we're all gonna be saying that repeatedly, I believe, and the but the devastating effects that has uh with alternative B to Sweetwater County. Stress to them that, uh, you know, all all people in all groups really across the state need to get involved in this and comment because uh this thing is going to spread. Uh, there's also a Platte Valley RMP or Platte County RMP uh in the process also. So this is not just a Sweetwater County thing. We're just the first step. September eleventh, attended the STAR Transit Board Meeting, uh reviewed some safety tips for the drivers, some drug testing. Uh, ridership is up, so that's good news. Uh, they discussed some of the new requirements for CDL training. And they are holding a policy workshop on October twenty-fifth. On September twelfth, attended the Sweetwater County Outdoor Rec Collaborative. I'll just say ditto to uh what Commissioner Richards said in the spirit of saving time. Uh, September thirteenth and fourteenth, I also watched the Joint Agriculture Public Lands Water Resource uh water meeting. Again, ditto to Commissioner Richards. On September thirteenth, um uh Commissioner Richards, myself met with Joe Nicholas and Alicia Summers from Frontier West Carbon Solutions. Again, I won't repeat what he said. Uh, on September fourteenth, attended an appreciation dinner for nurse practitioners and physicians assistants for the hospital. Uh, it was a great event and good to be with everybody. Short appreciation for those folks. They do an awesome job up there. I also sat in on the Wyoming County Commission Association call on the thirteenth. As with all of us, I've received many phone calls and personal meetings and conversations regarding the RMP. Um, I think we're all gonna be, as I said earlier, gonna be saying this repeatedly. I don't have any idea how many hours we're all going to spend on this or how many I've already spent. Uh, I've talked to um several times with Forrest Kaminga, the manager of Wyoming State Trails, what it has, uh what it means to recreation in Sweetwater County. Again, what it's also going to mean in the state in the future. Uh, I've worked with the Blue Ribbon Coalition, Wyoming State Snowmobile Association, Mark Sorrell from Southwest Wyoming Off-Road Trails. Uh, spoke with Josh Corsi from Mule Fanatics, Colin McKee with Petroleum Association of Wyoming, a variety of legislators, one I know fairly well. And uh just just a a huge variety of people, but um, you know, that that alternative B states in there that it will cost approximately fifty percent of the oil and gas jobs in Sweetwater County. Uh, it's gonna be states in there how devastating it will be for mining. That all translates to less county jobs, less city jobs in Rock Springs and Green River, uh less healthcare jobs, less small business jobs. So um just to tag on to everybody else's comments up here that uh please, the public needs to get involved and make their comments. Um, I believe there's hopefully going to be a meeting that Senator Cole and Senator Jones are gonna put together to help folks make those comments and uh make good comments that that dispute alternative B. So please, uh, please get involved in that. That's going to be critical to Sweetwater County. Uh, last night I did attend the Town Hall for Secretary of State Chuck Gray. It was an interesting event, so that uh pretty much wraps up my comments.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Jones? Getting right into the swing of things in your new role.
Trying.
All right. Well, it looks like I'm up next, so I'll try not to be too repetitive here. Um, on the sixth, I attended the monthly mayors and commissioner meeting with the chamber. We spent some time obviously discussing the BLM's RMP and updated each other on some of the different happenings within the local governments. I asked that they help spread the word on any good candidates they may have for the hospital and Southwest Counseling Boards as well, which they said they'd be happy to uh do. We also discussed trying to align us all on similar zoning regulations where applicable, which may help streamline some of the processes with the anticipated growth. Not sure exactly what that might look like, but the notion work together is always well received, and I appreciate those relationships. Uh, I've spent quite a bit of time dealing with a few different boards who have reached out looking for some advice on board operation and function. Um, some of those I liaise to and some we appoint members to, but don't necessarily have an assigned liaison to. So I've tried to assist where I can or asked for the help of the H R department uh with certain aspects. But the function of these boards throughout the county are very important, and I appreciate all of those who volunteer to serve. It's it's hard to find good people who are willing, and so when those that do reach out for assistance, I think that speaks some volume and knowing that they're trying to do what's right. They may just not know you know, how to handle certain items or have the experience in serving, but uh we all start out somewhere, so. I encourage any of those boards who represent Sweetwater County to not be afraid to ask for advice that they may need, knowing that, you know, our role as a commission is not to make the decisions for them or even influence, but more rather to offer support and guidance on certain processes and perhaps policy. Um, I reported a couple of weeks ago that the Southwest Counseling Board had requested some of this uh kind of orientation at their last meeting and wanting to understand better the different roles of a community service board, so. I've had a handful of conversations with Gary and John and their board and staff in preparation of their meeting next week to hopefully to hopefully work through some of this uh collectively, so we can get a lot of the questions answered on the relationship, the county agreement and the different visions moving forward. But I just wanted to take time to appreciate staff's willingness to help out with some of this as the county is a very busy business and a lot of time has been devoted towards preparing for that, so I appreciate their assistance with that. On the thirteenth, I met with representatives from Frontier Carbon and heard about the plans with the Sweetwater Carbon Storage Hub. I didn't know a great deal about this project, so it was very informative, and I appreciate Kayla with SEDC helping arrange it. I look forward to attending their open house on October fourth and encourage the public to as well, and they will also be a part of the growth and expansion pan- panel on the fifth. That's hosted by SEDC here in the commission chambers. A lot of us keep speaking to, you know, how much activity is on the horizon in Sweetwater County, and while many of these projects still have years to go before they come to fruition, I think it's exciting news for our local economy. Many of them have, you know, new technology or a different form of technology that currently exists. Uh, which should give all those economic development preachers something to be proud of. I visited the purchasing department last Wednesday as well and had great conversations with Beverly, Marty, Aaron and Austin. That is a very well organized operation out there. Makes it pretty easy to be a liaison too. Um, they've been busy working with the auditors, handling the different county vehicle bids and preparing and organizing the surplus auction, but I certainly appreciate all that they do over there. Like all of you have reported, um, we've all had several conversations about the BLM's resource management plan and will can continue to into the future, it seems, uh to learn more about the complexities of this process. As we've kind of already beat into the ground today, but I think it's important that we continue to do that. Uh, we do have a great team working diligently on sorting through all the documents between uh land use CLG and a handful of elected officials from city, county and state, including some recent conversations with the governor. I think it's important that uh we work together as a team, and it's gonna take a team to hopefully you know, get this extension request to go through to allow for adequate time to respond, um, so that we take care of the effects and perhaps the preferred option um in regards to the residents and the economy of Sweetwater County. I received a call from staff at Southwest Counseling yesterday morning, letting me know of a couple of water leaks they had at their facility on Foothill Boulevard over the weekend. Um, at about eight o'clock on Saturday morning, they had a irrigation line break out in front of their facility, which they were able to get repaired, but then a few hours later around noon, they had a check valve on their backflow preventer fail, which flooded the back half of their facility. County maintenance was called out and helped get the water shut down to prevent any further damage. And cleanup crews were called in to help address the mess with drying out the facility, removing damaged goods and assessing all the damage together. Um, facilities and H R are both in the loop as far as insurance goes, and we will help assist where we can in getting things back in order. Current estimates are around forty-five thousand to restore their operation. Um, fortunately, it shouldn't have too much of an effect on the day-to-day operation, it sounds like, in talking with their staff. Yesterday, I received an invite to attend a meeting at the Memorial House, at Memorial Hospital with various community stakeholders centered around a discussion for inpatient behavior health services. I look forward to attending that and learning more in a couple of weeks and should have some information to bring forth to you all by the second meeting in October. Uh, missed my Water Users Coalition meeting yesterday due to some schedule conflicts, but I'll try and reach out to those individuals and get right up to speaker to uh report anything there at our next meeting in October for you all. Aside from that, I'll have Board of Health, the BLM Public Meeting and my monthly Southwest Counseling Meeting next week, all of which happened to fall on the exact same day, so that should be fun. And there probably won't be a whole lot of toilet sales that day, but um I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have before handing it over to Commissioner Slaughter. If not, Rob, you're bringing up the rear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the sixth, I attended the federal partners meeting with Commissioner Tolman. I believe it's a good exercise and one that's very necessary to opening lines of communication with the federal agencies. I really like to thank Commissioner Tolman for getting that set back up again. I I think it's something that's been missing for the last little while, and we need to renew those alliances. Um, I suggested that we do monthly meetings with what's taking place with the RMP rather than quarterly, and the group agreed. So for the foreseeable future, we will be meeting monthly. Uh, there was a request that we have coffee and donuts for our next meeting, which will be uh held on the fourth of October. Um, we will have coffee. I will bring donuts and all of our federal partners hopefully will be happy with that, so. On the seventh, I met with the Capitol Committee to discuss capital expenditures versus routine maintenance. The idea was to help component unit directors assess their capital needs and be able to accurately convey them to the county capital committee in hopes of assisting in the annual creation of a capital expenditures list for budget purposes. On the eighth, I met with Green River City Administrator Reed Clevenger to discuss the specific purpose tax and to bring him up to speed on actions of the specific purpose tax joint powers board. He reasserted that the city is not interested in bonding and questioned the amount that will be available for city projects under this method of distribution. I explained that the amount available would be the total project cost that was estimated to cover the projects listed on the ballot initiative. He felt it should be the full amount listed on the ballot, which includes costs associated with bonding, i.e. interest expense, bond council, underwriter fees, et cetera. I suggested I would include the issue for the monthly joint powers board meeting to be held Monday, September eleventh, and that he should attend. Later that day, I met with Commissioner Jones, Attorney De Leon and Memorial Hospital Attorney Jeff Phillips to discuss the letter and MOU that Attorney Phillips created to set forth the new terms necessary for distribution to the hospital approved by the county commission. I had issues with the letter and felt it misstated certain facts. Attorney Phillips agreed to remove the letter from the information provided to the commission at this meeting. Once the letter was removed, I felt the MOU captured the essence of our intent, and we will address that later today. On the eleventh, I participated in a call with representatives of the specific purpose tax working group to prepare for the bond ratings call, which was to be held on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Rock Springs City Finance Director Matt McBurnett was on that call with myself and our underwriter and bond counsel. Later that day, I presided over my first full meeting as chair of the specific purpose tax joint powers board. We covered all of the preparation that our working group had assembled in preparation for the bond sale. Action was taken on designation of the trustee bank, approval of the engagement letters for both the bond council and the underwriter. Approval of the resolution was set forth the indenture, the preliminary official statement, the bond purchase agreement and the intergovernmental agreement. At the conclusion, City of Green River Finance Director Chris Meets asked to have time to report back to his city council and attorney. He stated the city may want to reconsider the issue of bonding. Underwriter and bond council felt that it wouldn't severely delay the sale, so they agreed. And we agreed to go ahead and allow the city to do that. They will be talking to the council today on that matter. Also heard an update from Jamestown, Rio Vista, Representative Kell Jaspersen on the progress of their board. Um, that he's reported they are diligently working to prepare for their project. On the thirteenth, I worked with ratings agency Moody's to provide information that will be used to set the rating for the bonds that will be sold to finance the specific purpose projects. Matt McBurnett also participated in that call. All went well. I believe it will receive a favorable rating, which will encourage bidders on the sale of the bonds. On the eighteenth, I reviewed RFPs for the Energy Roads Projects. As liaison for the Public Works Department, I was selected as one of the five individuals to rate the RFPs. I'm learning many new technical skills in my role as commissioner. I was then able to speak with Jessica Western, whom Richard Stem recommended we consider using as a consultant to help set up our collaborative with the Ashley National Forest. Jessica has worked with both Sublet County and Lincoln County on collaboratives that they have set up and are currently using. Jessica would be willing to appear before us on the twenty-fourth of October to further explain her role moving forward with us. She would ask that we would pay her costs associated with her travel, much the same as we did for Richard Stem. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would ask for a motion to do that. Right, I would actually make a motion to do that if you would allow me to do so.
Do we have any idea? I mean, just, I guess, similar to Rich's rip out, where where's she coming from?
She's coming from Sheridan. Um, the associated costs, I would imagine, would be uh uh under a thousand dollars. And we would, again, if Commissioner Tolman would agree, ask that the Coalition of Local Governments split that cost with us. I would believe they would do that. Um, just for informational purposes on that, I have received lots of positive feedback on the concept of setting up this collaborative. Um, in talking with Eric, he believes that there's some FINRPA money, which would potentially be available for us to use to help fund this collaborative. And from what we're hearing from the Ashley National Forest and their representatives, they believe that there's some money that would be available for this process also.
Commissioners, we do have a motion to authorize uh travel expense for a potential collaborative with Jessica Western.
Second.
By Commissioner Slaughter. We do have a second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion on that? I have one question, Commissioner, and I hate to get too off topic here, but I was reached out by a member from SCORC who was working with um Ashley National Forest Forest in regards to um a national park down at Flaming Gorge and was curious if that would have any effect if we were collaborative with them, if that was kind of any conflict that may arise. I didn't think so, but I told them I'd pass along to you, and maybe we can discuss when Jessica comes as well, um, or if you have any background or?
Mister Chairman, there has been some discussion of that. Um, and Ashley Ashley has um actually talked to me a little bit about that. I don't believe that there is a conflict with respect to it, but it would be something it would be dealing with as a collaborative if it were to take place.
Sure. Okay. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay.
And last, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, last, um, I would like to get that information on Mr. Podolinski, if I could, from Ireland. And I would like to state that in response to my request at a prior meeting to potentially get a referee shirt and whistle, um, Commissioner Richards today supplied me with a whistle and a red and yellow card to use for caution and dismissal of anyone who may create a problem during any of my mediation in the future. So thank you very much, Commissioner Richards.
You're welcome.
And I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. I if I understood you right, in regards to this specific purpose tax, we went from Green River this whole entire time, not wanting to bond and just assuming that if their projects, and I'm just throwing out numbers here, cost twenty million dollars. When the ballot initiative went through, it was just an estimate as to what, you know, bond fees, interest may cost, assuming everyone was going to bond. And so as that rolled down to their portion, it was roughly, you know, two million dollars. So even though they're not bonding, they're assuming they're gonna get that additional two million dollars. Is that what I'm understanding?
That was my understanding of their request. They would like to receive the full amount. And I explained to them that, once again, the numbers, it was uh actually what the the pro- actual project cost were were twenty point five million dollars. Um, and on the ballot initiative, the amount which included bonding costs and things of that nature was twenty-two million. Uh, I believe three hundred thousand dollars and change. So the difference was about a million, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the the city questioned why the other entities would be receiving more money than they would. I explained to them that it was because they were going to be, they were going to be responsible for paying those costs associated with bonding and that they would only be receiving the uh amount of money to fund their projects that was on the ballot initiative as Green River would. So they would, no one would be receiving. that was on the ballot initiative as Green River would. So they would, no one would be receiving any additional funding. But it was still uh, the position of the representatives of Green River that they felt that they should be able to receive the amount that was on the ballot initiative itself. Um, you know, once again, I don't believe that that was the, the view of the joint powers board nor, nor our counselor, underwriter. And so therefore that was the reason uh, I believe that they have now chosen to consider potentially bonding because they believe they're going to receive an additional one point five million dollars by doing so. Um, I, I don't understand it to be perfectly honest. I, I think it's a very clear cut issue. I think it's black and white, which I'm not a real black and white person, but I, I think this one is very black and white. So, um, you know, we will see what takes place with their council meeting tonight and, and what comes from their um, attorney. And move forward from that point in time, but I, I, you know, I, I think the entire time, as you say, Green River has been planning on doing their own financing. But because they believe they were going to receive additional funding, um, they've changed their position now or, or potentially are looking at changing their position.
Yeah, I guess that's part of my frustration. I mean, they have a list of projects that are twenty and a half million dollars that the voters approved of. The voters also approved of whatever additional expense, bonding expense may be included should they decide to bond. But because they're not bonding, then that doesn't mean they just automatically get that additional funding to go towards their projects. It's not what was promised to the voters. It's not what was approved. So you know, it was an estimate and I think it was around eighty four million or whatever the number was. And by the time we sorted through which entities wanted to bond and which didn't, as we heard from Alan at our last meeting, it was somewhere around the tune of seventy nine million. And so I guess I'm, I'm a little taken back by this approach as if they're, they're being shorted money because that is certainly not the case. Even if they do bond, that additional money is going towards the bonding costs. And so, you know, here we are, what we all feel is, is delayed in the process as it is. The bond documents have been prepared. You've spoken to the intergovernmental agreements, the underwriting. Everything's ready to go, right on track is, you know, basically when you took over, you know, the timeline of closing the bonds and everything and we have to stop everything and rewrite everything and, you know, pay additional fees to the underwriters and whomever, whomever else to prepare this. I just think it's, it's ridiculous and it's not any additional money to the city of Green River. They're the ones that wanted to go finance their own through SLIB, I believe it was because they felt like they could find, you know, additional. Or I guess they could, they could borrow at, at a lesser rate than what they may bond for. And, and so now they feel as though they're being shorted money just because they're not bonding. I, I don't stand for that at all. And I think, you know, that's a little bit late in the game to, you know, try and muddy the waters on something that's been pretty straightforward this entire process. So I just want to express my frustration and, and uh, concern with that. I, I think that's very unfair to the joint powers board. I think it's unfair to the governments and I certainly think it's most unfair to the public who agreed to put forth the projects at the price that was given and now they want additional funds that was not with the public supported. So any support you need as far as uh, you know, your, your meeting, obviously you're the chair of that, you know, and we'll support you, but I'm very disappointed in, in having heard that on behalf of Green River. So just wanted to express that. Are there any other comments, Commissioner Richards?
Chairman, I'm, I second all your comments on this extent, but I want to circle back regarding your, your, your question on um, a state park down in Fire Hole. That is, that is one of Scork's goals. Um, State Parks had expressed a desire to put another state park somewhere in southwest Wyoming. Uh, Scork looked at that and thought we really needed to pursue one in Sweetwater County to get the benefits that would come along with that. And after some long discussions, uh, Fire Hole was, was decided to be the target of that and, and with the focus of their efforts. Does that mean that it's going to become a state park? No, it just, just means it's something we, we can work toward if, if it makes sense. Um, and I, and I believe the, the forest collaborative that Commissioner Slaughter is working on can only enhance that. And, and I think the goal is Fire Hole has been a underfunded and underutilized asset to our community. And by pursuing a state park there, we'd, we'd hoped we could bring some money towards that to, to reinvigorate it, to create another um, recreational destination here to bring more people uh, to our community and, and more, more resources to our community for their recreation. If continuing with a state park isn't the answer, then we'll go in a different direction because if, if the forest service is a result of Commissioner Slaughter's collaborative, brings more money to, to the northern part of Ashley National Forest, um, then it might not be necessary to pursue a state park, but I think we work, work parallel to try to bring the resources we can and go with the best option.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, they weren't sure if, you know, we would be, I guess, muddying the waters on that. If, you know, we had a collaborative and we were also trying to recruit, you know, some form of a state park. So just something they wanted to have put out there and have the discussion on. So appreciate that background. Any other comments, Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, um, just a comment about the state parks or um, one of the, of course, one of the big issues is going to be funding. There is a misconception out there or misunderstanding about the trust fund that the legislature set aside. It was six million dollars. That money is not to be touched, that six million itself. And this is still working its way through the legislature, so it hasn't even been completely hashed out, but the way it was set up was eighty percent of the interest of the six million dollars would be accessible for state parks or whatever the case may be. So uh, it's gonna depend largely on the interest. And then of course, the cost of the project, the interest might not cover the cost of the project. So uh, but there is a misconception out there that there is six million dollars to work with and there is not, at least not the way it was designed and, and the direction it's heading.
Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions for Commissioner Slaughter? Well, thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work and uh, I guess let us know if we can help more on some of those difficult items. Uh, with that, that completes the Commissioner comments portion of the agenda. Nice work, Commissioner. Sounds like some busy weeks ahead. Um, this will move us right along into tab D, the action and presentation items of the agenda. First up, we've got the hu- human services agreements and we've got Quirk Lane with us this morning. Morning Cindy.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, before you, I have the authorization for human service agreements. It's the last three um, that we had outstanding for the Food Bank of Sweetwater County, twenty six thousand, four hundred eighty five dollars. Young at Heart, two hundred twenty two thousand and the Youth Home Incorporated at one hundred thirty nine thousand, two hundred and three. So for these, the set of agreements, it's three hundred eighty seven thousand, six hundred eighty eight dollars. And just a reminder, this was already approved in the budget. We just have to send out the agreements and have their boards sign them.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions, Commissioners, on the human service agreements? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve authorization for these human service agreements in the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand, six hundred eighty eight dollars.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Did we have a second there? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay.
Thank you.
Motion unanimous. Thanks, Cindy. Next under tab D is item two. We've got the approval of the inmate housing contracts between Sweetwater County and the cities of Rock Springs and Green River. We've got Sheriff Grossnickel with us here this morning. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, what's before you is contract that we sent to uh, both cities for inmate housing and, and what this is, is if there's local charges, the cities are, are um, pay accordingly. Uh, that number hasn't changed for eight years now. And we all know with the present day of our nation and what this administration has done is everything is going through the roof as far as food. Um, electricity, everything. So um, we went before the two chiefs and told them this was coming. Uh, I believe Green Roxboro, one, one of the cities is already taking to their council and it's been signed. The other one will be going uh, to the council today to, to be signed by them. And then if we have a um, the chairman sign, we'll be good to go with those rates.
Very good. Thanks, Sheriff. Any questions on these housing contracts, Commissioners? Not entertain a motion to approve the updated inmate housing contracts between Sweetwater County and both cities of Rock Springs and Green River. Were individuals arrested on municipal ordinance violations and housed in the Sweetwater County Detention Center.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay.
I have a question.
You missed your opportunity, Commissioner. Mr. Tol. Go ahead.
Are you still?
Motion unanimous, by the way. Go ahead.
Are you still housing other prisoners for other counties?
We are, yes, whenever they need, uh, especially in the juvenile center. Means there's only four juvenile detention centers in the state.
Do they pay you similar?
Uh, they're, they're different rates.
Oh.
All right. Motion passes unanimous and thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Next, we have item three, which is change order number one to the two thousand twenty three lighting upgrade project throughout various county buildings. Uh, we do have Gene with us this morning who is remote and is going to give us a quick update on this. Morning, Gene. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman West and the rest of the Commissioners for allowing me to do this remotely. Um, what you have before you is, as you know, we've uh, been progressing pretty rapidly on a light upgrade, LED light upgrade project. We did run into a snag within the Green River courthouse where a lot of the older portion of the courthouse, the assessor's office, the clerk's office and the treasurer's office, how they ran the conduit was actually hardwired right to the back of the lights. Um, what the contractor had to do was then go in on a, under a separate time, uh, disconnect the lights, actually raise the conduit, support the conduit and then run extra whips down to uh, the new lights, uh, something that was unforeseen when he actually looked at the project. Um, you know, just one of those things where when you're dealing with stuff like this, um, it's just unforeseen. So he's asking for around nine thousand dollars, uh, change order to this project. We do have enough money, as I stated in my memo to you guys, uh, in the capital project to pay for this.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate the explanation. Any questions on the change order, Commissioners? If not, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
So to approve change order number one to the twenty twenty three lighting upgrade project. Uh, in the amount of nine thousand forty dollars and ninety five cents and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
You have a motion to approve change order number one by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gene. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, under item four, we've got a memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners and the Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County. On the packet is Commissioner Slaughter and Commissioner Jones. Which one he wants to take the bait?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will go ahead. Um, this is a, an M O U which was drafted to account for the changes which were made by the commission with respect to the distribution that will be paid to the hospital through the course of the year. As you're well aware, the board chose that we will be making intergovernmental transfers of the twelve or, or of the mill levy um, in the amount uh, of the request from each of the agencies, the hospital being one of them. Um, so this M O U is basically just to inform the commission along with the hospital board of those changes and make agreement of those. We had uh, several discussions and as I spoke in my comments, uh, one of the things that was going to be presented as part of this was a letter that had been drafted by the attorney from the hospital, Jeff Phillips. Um, it basically stated that he didn't believe this had any validity. Uh, and we've talked that out with our attorney. Uh, he agreed to pull it. So this, this memorandum is in line with what we were trying to accomplish by informing the hospital of the change that's going to be done and how we make payment to them. Um, they are in agreement of that now. So I would move that we approve this memorandum of understanding.
Thanks, Commissioner. We uh, do have a motion to approve the M O U between Sweetwater County and Memorial Hospital. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Original motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Appreciate your work on that Commissioners as well as John and we're sorting through some of that. That looked like a lot of redlining and kind of revamping there. So I'm glad everyone came on to the same page with that. Next, under tab D is item five. We've got a discussion on the county indigent burial procedures. Um, I asked Sally to add this to the agenda just because we've already received a couple of them. And I wasn't sure in the policy, we didn't particularly address a couple of items on at least that I recall is as far as which line item the funds will come out of. Um, I think it's coming out of the Board of County Commissioners under our other line item currently. And which is fine if, if you all want to continue on that way. Um, but there's also, it seemed to be from some of these funeral homes, some confusion on the documentation that was required relative to the state's approval or denial on, on the coverage. And so we had few applications that were filled out, um, you know, kind of immediately without going through that process. And by the time, by the time it came to the voucher approval, um, it was sent to me and I was kind of a little bit caught off guard as to, I don't know that we ever addressed who approves that and who kind of signs off to make sure that all the necessary you know, documentation is there. And so we've had some discussions on that. I know I've, Sally kind of by default has been helping with that and making sure everything's in line. So I appreciate that. If that works, certainly good with that. But I know Commissioner Richards had a pretty heavy hand in helping with this policy. So I just wanted to bring it up for some discussion to make sure that we have a good plan moving forward.
Miss, Mr. Chairman, as I, as I say, no, no plan survives first contact with the enemy. And that's kind of what we ran into here. Uh, we had, we had one of our funeral homes that had a, uh, a, a client who was indigent and is who actually reached out to us, um, looking for, for a policy because we do have statutory responsibility to, to fund indigent funeral care. Um, and they were very patient with us while we worked through the process. Um, and they were a, a huge resource in, in how we developed the policy. So when we put the policy into the place, they, they were really thorough in, in, in their application and their due diligence in, in, in searching other forms of payment before they came to us. Uh, and they'd already done that before we even adopted our, our policy. Um, the confusion I think came is when the second funeral home um, was encouraged to also apply because they had um, somebody pass away just recently. And, and it was kind of confusing because we got an application for indigent care funding the day after they um, applied for funding from the state. Um, and the way the statute's written, they have to exhaust all other avenues of funding, including, including power, um, S S I. Um, any, any benevolent funds that the person might have qualified for before coming to us. And I, and I had a discussion with, with that funeral home. Um, they said they would probably just pull that, that request until they've received all of the denials that they expect to receive from, from those, those agencies. So we, we probably going forward, we, we knew we would have some hiccups in the first, first couple. We expected three to four a year of these. Um, and, and Bonnie had, when she was here, had recommended that we fund it out of Commissioners other for now, until we had an idea of how many we're gonna, we're gonna come. Uh, if we don't have enough money in that account, by the end of the year, we may have to, to amend it. Um, but neither, neither funeral home really expects to have too many more of these. Um, on, honestly, but there's very, very few people who don't qualify for something. If they're, if they're in a nursing home, they're probably rece- receiving some, some state or federal benefit, which means they probably qualify for burial benefit. So we're, we're kind of like the last, last stop. Um, cause, cause the, the legislature realized they don't, they don't want funeral homes getting left with the bag at, at, at the end of it. They want, they want people. realized they don't, they don't want funeral homes getting left with the bag at, at, at the end of it. They want, they want people to get good respective care, whether, whether they have the resources for it or not, so they, they put it in the Commissioners' hands, and we do receive compensation if it's available from the state at the end of the year, so, so in the end, it should be, should be a net zero or at least a smaller, smaller cost, cost us, um, going, going forward, at least, at least through the net, this, thisness, the rest of this fiscal year, I, I would recommend we keep it in Commissioner other. Um, and in our discussions in the committee with, with Clerk Lane and Sally, we, we decided the, the application would just go through the Clerk's Office because they're the ones who are going to provide the voucher, didn't make sense to have several stops along the way, but, but you're right, somebody needs to be responsible for approving that voucher, and thank you for looking at that and saying, hey, there's, there's no due diligence here. Um, so we, we do need to probably work on that policy. I think it's okay for now, we, we can keep an eye on it, but over the next few months, uh, maybe I'll meet with them again and try to clear up that application. We, we used an application from another county. Um, thinking, well, if it works for them, must work for us, but, but I think there needs to be some more checkbox on there where the, where the applicant is agreeing that they've actually done their due diligence and, and not just sent an email expecting an answer the next, the next day.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, we got two right off the bat, I was just thinking, oh, boy, you know, this might be kind of opening up the door for any form of reimbursement, and so I just wanted to make sure.
Well, and, and another issue that came up is one funeral home agreed to charge us based on a scale, treating us almost like a a, a wholesale, uh, customer, not full retail price, and, and I know those are terrible terms to, to use in dealing, in dealing with somebody, um, who's lost their life, but it is, it is a business and they're looking for compensation for it. And the one funeral home billed us based on pretty close to their cost, and the other one billed us based on full retail, and so that's, that's a discussion we'll need to have if, if we're going to use these folks as vendors, they need, it needs to be made clear to them that they're not going to make money on this. Our purpose here is to recompensate them for their costs, so they don't, don't get left head in the bag, and I, and Mr. Chairman, I apologize, my, my voice is weak today and a long night.
No problem. No, I appreciate your work on that. I just wanted to make sure there's a general understanding, um. So we appreciate that, and we'll tweak it as we need to moving forward, but I know Sally's keeping a list, so that at the end of the year, we have all the proper documents for any state reimbursement on that too, so as long as she's good with that, we'll.
Mr. Chairman, the WCCA has taken taken the lead in that, in, in gathering all that at the end of the fiscal year and, and seeking for compensation, so the, the, the drawback is the statute says the state shall compensate us for any expenses we, we bear. There's a, a limit to each case. Um, however, that's subject to the legislature actually funding that line item in their budget. If they only give so much and there's, and every county is dipping into that pot, we might not get the full hundred percent reimbursement, so.
Interesting. Okay, I just want to have kind of an open discussion to make sure that everyone was on board with that. Is there any other comments or questions? If not, we'll just kind of continue on and see how things roll out now that both funeral homes have a good understanding of it, and we need to make some changes, we will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone's work on that. That's all I had on that Commissioners. Next up, we have a break, we're about eight minutes behind, so let's take um, a break until eleven o'clock, our next item is at eleven, so we'll take about a little over five minute break and resume at eleven. Yeah, we will call this meeting back to order. Where we left off was item number seven under tab D. We've got permission to apply for the Wyoming Library Multi-Purpose Community Facility Program Grant. With us this morning is Library Director Lindsay Travis. Morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman West, Commissioners. Um, I'm here today to ask for approval to, for the Sweetwater County Library System to apply for the Wyoming Library Multi-Purpose Community Facility Program, it's a long title. Um, this is a grant that is funded through the Coronavirus Capital Projects Fund through the US Department of Treasury and approved specifically for capital projects in Wyoming libraries. In order to be eligible, these funds, um, and project, for, for these funds, these projects need to be, to directly enable work, education, and health monitoring. Um, if the Sweetwater County Library can secure funds from this grant, we are looking to renovate meeting rooms at the White Mountain Library, the Green River Library, and the Rock Springs Library. All of those rooms are used by organizations and groups that help enable work, education, and health monitoring. And many of the library's own programs fall under those categories, especially under, under the education category. We estimate that these projects will cost about one point six million dollars, so securing these funds has the potential to save the county that amount in upgrades and, to the buildings. Um, since the county is the owner of the buildings and the library, the library board, and I respectfully, um, requests approval to apply for this grant, we also ask that Christina Marshall be able to help us in writing this grant and for the Chairman to sign a partnership letter in support of the grant. Um, the grant application is due October ninth, and I welcome any questions.
Thanks, Lindsay. So is the amount you're applying for the one point six then?
Yes.
Okay. Is it competitive, is there?
Um, there is twelve point six million dollars approved for the entire state for libraries, so probably, um, we're looking to kind of tier the grants. We know that we might not get all of the funds for every building, but we know which ones are a priority, a bigger priority over the others, so.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you reaching out to find additional funds to, uh, improve county facilities, it's always a good thing, so any questions, comments, Commissioners?
Is there any match required?
No, there's no match required.
Any other questions?
It's German, I, I mean, I just want to thank, thank Lindsay for being so great to work with, um, and, and I appreciate the work she's doing to save us money, these are, these are ongoing capital needs and, and, and this money would be invaluable to, to saving us in the future, so, um, I would move to approve the, uh, that the Commission, uh, partners with the library to apply for the Wyoming Library Multi-Purpose Community Facility Program Grant and authorize the Chairman to sign any, uh, any necessary documents.
I'd second that.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? We've got a second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion?
Question, yeah. Uh, Ms. Christina, is that going to fit into your timeframe of life? Thank you. She always says that, but we, we should check whether it was.
My question as well, so very good. Any other comments, questions? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Lindsay. Thanks for coming before us and good luck.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we are right on schedule. Up next, we have the Sweetwater County Juvenile Needs Assessment Presentation. We've got County Grants Manager Christina Marshall with us today. Karen Kelly, the County Juvenile Probation Director, Beth Mulligan with Corona Insights. Any, Theodropolis, I'm sure I slaughtered that one, no offense, Ralph, with Crohnians.
You can find a better, right, slaughtered.
And gracious sea leaf. I love doing that, it's fitting for this panel up here. Good morning, Christina.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ready for the grand event today, so.
You got forty-five minutes, so you can keep us on track now.
Get you some popcorn. So I'll be brief, just to introduce Corona, um, brief history of this project. On June sixth, twenty twenty-three, you all approved, uh, and awarded a contract to Corona Insights to conduct a juvenile needs assessment. So this is a requirement for the Community Juvenile Services Board to develop a strategic plan related to juvenile services, but honestly, it's very important for you to know what's going on in our community. So the overarching priorities of this specific project are to examine the local systems related to the early identification and diversion of children at risk of entry into the juvenile court system. And second, the prevention of juvenile delinquency. So Corona Insights has done a fantastic job working on the project. They completed it within the contractual timeframe and will present their key findings. I'm very happy to say this was completely grant-funded and no cost to the county. Um, the Community Juvenile Services Board is an advisory board established based on, um, state statutes. And so they advise on issues concerning juvenile, um, services in the county. I want to point out that in your packet, I listed the current members, we have, um, some online and also uh, there was one in attendance, but, um, I'm not sure where he went. So with that, I am very pleased to rep- to present the members from Corona Insights, and they had a PowerPoint presentation, okay?
Very good, thanks, Christina. Morning, ladies.
Okay, we've tried to time this for you all today to be forty-five minutes, we're hoping, uh, so we.
We appreciate that. I know it was, it was lengthier before, but I'm like, uh, you might put some of these guys to sleep, so we gotta.
Fair. Uh, and we'll, we'll send you the full report later that will have more detail, uh, we're gonna.
Oh, microphone.
Oh, sorry. Okay, is this better?
Can you adjust it down if need be to?
Yes, I'm not very.
You can slide it towards you too.
Oh, 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 got it, okay, all right, okay. That sounds better, I can hear me.
Now I got you, thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, so we will send you the full report after this, and it'll have more detail than we're going to present today. We're going to try to keep this a little tighter so that we can get through in a reasonable amount of time, sort of the key, uh, the key points. No? There we go. Okay. So first, Christina has already introduced us, but I thought I would give a brief. We're with Corona Insights. We're a consulting firm that does services for market research, evaluation, and needs assessment, and strategic consulting. We've been around for twenty-four years. We primarily serve public and nonprofit entities in kind of the Mountain West. Here in Sweetwater County has been one of our longest clients, actually, been working with the county on a variety of needs assessments, going back to like two thousand and one. So I think this is the first time we've come in person to present, so we're very excited to actually be here. The three of us today presenting, I'm Beth Mulligan. I'm a principal at the firm. I've been with Corona for seventeen years. Annie is a senior associate. And she does all of our qualitative work, so we're going to present a lot of interview research today, and she has done most of that. Graisha Seeley with me is also an associate, and she has done a lot of our quantitative work. So kind of brought our full team to give you different bits and pieces, and we'll trade off as we go. This, I think, information was in your packets, but just kind of reiterating with what Christina said, that we were grant-funded to do a community juvenile services needs assessment for the county. And that our approach basically included doing a lot of secondary data analysis, both from public sources like the, you know, the Wyoming Division of Criminal Investigation has crime data and the Department of Family Services and the Department of Education. We've also gotten data from the probation department and some other county, county departments. And then in addition to that, we've interviewed key people throughout the system to kind of get a better sense of what's going on and how things are working. Okay, with that, I'm going to hand it over, I think, to Graisha to talk about some big picture things in the county.
Yes. Sorry, I'm taller. Um, okay, yeah, so kind of a broad overview, what we're talking about here, the population that we are interested in, juvenile population, obviously. So Sweetwater County as a whole has about forty-eight hundred children aged ten to seventeen. About two-thirds are in School District One, and about a third are in School District Two. Now, one of the things that we know about delinquency, delinquent behavior, is that it can be impacted and influenced by a lot of different factors, a lot of different social and environmental pieces that sort of fit together to either sort of protect against delinquency or promote it in some ways. So starting way out large as a society, you know, things like poverty and economic stress, as well as just social inequities, religious and cultural values, things like that, these can all have an influence as well as within a community. So things like school engagement and neighborhood characteristics, resource access. Similarly, moving down again to just family and friend relationships that may or may not influence the likelihood of delinquency. These can, you know, look like what relationships between parents and children look like, what a home life looks like, support networks, things of that nature, and all the way down to individual factors. So personal things like demographic characteristics, knowledge, attitudes. This can also include like mental health, disabilities, trauma, things like that. So we know that there are some risk factors that are particularly applicable to children under eighteen in Sweetwater County. So about twenty-seven percent live in a rented home, and about fourteen percent live in a household with income within the past twelve months. That is below the poverty level. So these are risk factors, you know. About thirteen percent live in a household with supplemental security, income, cash, public assistance, food stamps, SNAP benefits, things of this nature. And about seven percent of children have a disability. So sort of thinking about how all of these factors might influence what we're talking about here today, which of course is juvenile delinquency. Okay, so another thing that we know about Sweetwater County as a whole is that there are a lot of regional disparities here between Sweetwater District One and Sweetwater District Two. So, for example, more children are living in a single-parent household in Sweetwater District One compared to Sweetwater District Two. The proportion of parents that are, that have a bachelor's degree or higher and are in the labor force, that's both higher in District Two compared to District One. District Two also has a higher median income. It has fewer families below the poverty level, fewer families with food stamps or SNAP benefits. More, more families are living in homes, single-family homes, and more students are graduating from high school in four years. So these are some, you know, clear demographic trends, the differences between these two school districts, which is going to come up a lot. Similarly, special education, this is something that we were interested in because these levels are pretty consistent between District One and District Two, but it is hovering around seventeen percent of students that are enrolled in special education and can include a wide variety of disabilities as per the Individuals with Disability Education Act, everything from autism, deafness, you know, speech and language disabilities, traumatic brain injuries as well that can count. So yeah, both school districts have seen a rise in the proportion of special education students since two thousand and sixteen, but again, both are hovering at around seventeen percent. There, another difference between the school districts here are, we looked at English language learners and the proportion of folks that speak English less than well. So in District One, there are more English language learners, and they are representing a wider variety of home languages. So the language that they are presumably fluent in and speak with their families at home. More variety and just more period in District One compared to District Two. The rates of people in Sweetwater County at large that speak English less than well is lower than the national average. It's one point two percent. It's ever so slightly higher than the state average, but also pretty similar between District One and District Two. Another thing that we really wanted to focus on is mental health, which we will get into a bunch more later, actually. But just to sort of paint a picture to begin with, Wyoming as a state has one of the highest rates of death from suicide among adolescents, fifteen to nineteen, at twenty-three point seven per one hundred thousand. And in the most recent data that is available, more than one in five Sweetwater County middle and high school students reported considering suicide, and one in eight have attempted. So, you know, these are, these are factors that are really important, especially when considering the different influences that might cause a child to commit a crime or to behave in a delinquent manner. These are, these are huge factors. You know, we have, we have some of these different categories of mental health issues or struggles that children might be facing, and the differences between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty. So you can see that, for example, hopelessness in the last thirty days, children in two thousand and twenty, about fifty-nine percent of them said that they were struggling with that compared to fifty-three percent four years earlier. And among residents of all ages, Sweetwater County does have higher rates of suicide deaths and deaths due to drug injury. So that could be accidental overdose, suicide, homicide, things of this nature than the Wyoming statewide average. Similarly, we wanted to look at substance abuse, substance use and abuse. Most substance use has decreased from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty among Sweetwater County adolescents. However, more than one-third of middle and high school students have tried alcohol and vaping. One in six have tried marijuana. One in eight have used inhalants. And, you know, nine percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds are considered to have substance use disorder in the past year. So again, this is another factor that is, is really just helping to paint an entire picture, something that includes all of these factors when we're thinking about juvenile justice system, juvenile delinquency, and the like. And now I'm going to pass it to you, I think.
See here, back to the short.
How bad did I slaughter your last name?
Not so bad, actually. It's Theodopolis. Uh-oh.
You will be dismissed with your next violation.
Oh, that was amazing.
Yeah. Only slightly brutalized. We'll go with that. No, but it was totally fine. So yeah, we'll talk a little bit about juvenile crime and the central intake process. We wanted to highlight that single point of entry has been sort of the way that youth come up to the system. So Sweetwater County Attorney receives this kind of single point of entry where all various allegations against juveniles, so if there is a police citation written or a report made, everything for juveniles goes through the single point of entry with the county attorney. And so they oversee all the charging documents, any kind of citation that comes up. And then they sort of help determine through single point of entry where the crime needs to be addressed. So if it's sent back to a different court, or if it can kind of proceed, or if it can just be dismissed altogether. Single point really relies on this entire team to convene and talk about everything together. So law enforcement, DFS, school representative, anyone who's on juvenile probation who knows the youth. This is where all of these professionals and any advocates gather together and address what has happened and where to kind of advocate for and drive sort of the next steps. So they, yeah, essentially there's sort of a process of determining, you know, should they stay in their original court where the charge was made? Should the case be dismissed altogether? Should they require diversion? And we have a discussion of what all those diversions look like. And then should a juvenile court case be opened formally? So that's this whole own set. Juvenile court then is really utilized only to make sure that both the youth and their family can kind of be compelled to services. So that's where things like that are mostly directed. And a single point of entry is largely viewed very positively among any of the participants in it. So, you know, I had the pleasure of speaking with a lot of different folks in, oh, is there? Sorry. That's not me. Okay. A lot of different folks who participate in single point, and it's been an excellent, they've described it as efficient, well-run. It really brings together all the pieces, right? So that they can have that larger situation of the youth really address some of the unique aspects of the crime and think about where that youth trajectory should really be. So to adequately address youth, really need to have them come up in the first place. So if they don't make it to single point, if so, for instance, if a citation, if, you know, there's decision, the citation doesn't move forward at the police level, let's say, then they are not going to be seen at single point, right? And so one of the things that we're encountering is that there's a sense that youth might not be seen at single point early enough. So, for instance, compared to Rock Springs, Green River has far fewer citations, even when adjusting for population size. And there are a few things that absolutely factor into that. For instance, Green River does not have daytime curfew anymore. That's not part of its municipal code, so police aren't going to pick up youth on that. There's really no offense there, no citation to write. And so even if youth are doing those sorts of things, it's not a, it's not an offense. Whereas in Rock Springs, it is. So you will see more youth come up that way. Until recently, there was only one school resource officer in Green River, and so far fewer sort of point of interface with local youth to have those citations being written. Whereas in Rock Springs, there have been three. And so now there are two, and so we'll expect probably to see a little bit more happen in that regard. But so there are some policy factors that play up into that as well. And just to kind of highlight the role of school resource officers, they're really, they have a great kind of heartbeat on the juvenile community. They move between different schools at elementary, middle, and high school level. They interact with youth on a daily basis and often, you know, very low-stakes, casual kinds of ways, and they get a real good sense of what are some of the issues youth are facing in the community. So they're an excellent resource, and school counselors, school administrators, probation agents that we spoke to have largely excellent relations with the school resource officers. So they're a fantastic resource to kind of tap into more, but definitely relying more on their experience and their interactions with youth to kind of drive forward those citations that then come up to single point. Pass it back. We're trying to sprinkle some hard data in for you periodically, but not make it too much. So we pulled juvenile arrests by offense category, which there's been a sort of major transition in how the uniform crime reporting system is organized over the last several years. So prior to two thousand and twenty-one, it was in essentially a different system that's not really comparable. So we're showing two, two years of data, but what is primarily tracked now statewide, where you can, you can compare counties, you can sort of see what's going on in Sweetwater versus elsewhere in the state, are offenses in these two categories. There's Group A offenses where they track everything that's, that has happened, all of the offenses, as well as the arrests for those offenses. So sometimes crimes happen, and you're not sure who did them, so there might be an offense, but not an arrest and things like that. But in any case, what we're showing here are the juvenile arrests in each category over year, and we'll show you a little bit more interesting information about this in a second. But the main thing is that Group A, for the most part, includes somewhat more serious crimes. So crimes against persons, which include things like murder, rape, and assault, crimes against property, which include things like arson, fraud, theft, and crimes against society, which includes primarily drug charges is what's in that bin, but also weapons, gambling law violations, things like that. Group B offenses are ones that they're, they don't track them as offenses until there is an arrest because they don't, that's sort of how they know about it, is that they go to arrest someone. But largely, it's kind of a slightly less serious group of offenses, so bad checks, curfew violations, disorderly conduct, things like that. So we've looked at juvenile arrests by department and also the arrest rate in each community. So Rock Springs has a population of ten to seventeen-year-olds, which is kind of a proxy for who's in the juvenile justice system, is usually kids around between twelve and seventeen. And there's twenty-five hundred kids, roughly. There were almost a hundred arrests in two thousand and twenty-one, a little fewer in two thousand and twenty-two. But basically, the Rock Springs arrest rate is about thirty-nine-ish arrests per thousand juveniles in the community. In Green River, there's sixteen hundred kids and about fifteen arrests a year, which is a rate closer to, it's under ten percent. Or it's under ten per thousand. So basically, the arrest rate in Rock Springs is about four times higher than in Green River. And the Sheriff's Office, which we're kind of using as a proxy for outside of the metro, or, you know, if you call it the metro, outside of the Rock Springs, Green River area, it's somewhat lower even. So we broke down by, by arrest groups. So the Group A arrests are, again, kind of the more serious arrests. Eighty-nine percent of those were made by the Rock Springs Police Department, only four percent by the Green River PD. And we're showing the juvenile population breakdown for kind of comparison, and about fifty percent of the youth who are ten to seventeen in the county live in Rock Springs. About a third of them live in Green River, and the remaining sixteen percent are somewhere outside of those two communities. So it is certainly the case that the arrests are coming disproportionately from Rock Springs and Green River, and in particular, from Rock Springs. Group B arrests are somewhat less skewed in that regard, where twenty percent of the Group B arrests are coming from Green River. So we know there are kind of disparities, but it's not, it doesn't say why there, you know, those things are there. It could be differences in criminality. You may actually have more criminal behavior happening in Rock Springs, but it may also be differences in policies or norms in the jurisdictions. And as Annie was saying, what counts as a crime in Rock Springs is somewhat different than what counts as a crime in Green River for juveniles. So some of it is, is that. For sort of lack of a better place to put this within the presentation, I have some data on juvenile detention, which I think Annie will talk a little bit more about where this actually falls, but but youth who are arrested where it's serious and they need to be contained, I guess, immediately, for lack of a better word, they might go to detention shortly, but usually this is the, then you have to go to court and they decide if you stay there. But when we look at juvenile detentions, the number of arrests that are being placed in juvenile detention has declined over the last ten years. But the average length of stay for each person who is in detention has grown. So we're seeing, what I think is, we're seeing fewer kids in detention, but they're there for longer. The average length of stay, this data is not shown in the graph, but it's longer for males than females. Males, on average, are in juvenile detention for twenty-three days versus fifteen for females, and it's somewhat longer. And it's somewhat longer for older youth than younger youth. So kids that are 17 are there on average for 28 days and kids under 17 average more like 18 days. We pulled kind of the five-year average on the kids who are ending up in detention. It's about three quarters male, 80% white, which is close to kind of the community breakdown. It's more than half are 16 or 17 years old, but there's 9% who are under 14. So there is a fairly substantial chunk of really young kids. Most of them are, they're coming through juvenile court as opposed to municipal or circuit court. And to some extent, that has to do with the level of crime that goes through different courts. And they're mostly there for an arrest warrant or probable cause as opposed to just having been taken into custody. The originating court has trended a little bit, there's been kind of an increase in the number of single point of entry cases that are originating in the Rock Springs Municipal Court over time. But for the past five years, it's averaged about half of cases are coming. Half of the cases that show up in single point are the Rock Springs Municipal Court assignment originally, and about a quarter of them are district court. And the offenses we see most often, we've removed traffic offenses from this graph because they were brought to single point prior to 2016, but aren't any longer. There has been a slight increase in status offenses being brought to single point, which could reflect that more are happening or that more are being noticed and caught. And crimes against the public similarly have grown, but there have been pretty consistent rates of alcohol offenses and property offenses and crimes against persons, which are assault and those kinds of things. Drug offenses. And on average, the bigger thing that I think we've kind of wanted to make note of is that there's just under 5,000 youth who are 10 to 17 in Sweetwater County. And Sweet, and the single point of entry process is 500 cases a year, which is about 10% of kids in the county are going through the juvenile services system, which is fairly substantial when you think about how many kids are kind of subject to this process. I think we have more on diversion. Cases by gender, about two-thirds of cases are males. That's fairly consistent with crime breakdowns, but it's disproportionate to the actual population. And by race and ethnicity, about 85% of the cases coming through single point are classified as white. Youth, 10% are Hispanic and the remaining 5% are people of color. The juvenile population is less white than that, so you've got to some extent, a slightly disproportionate white kids getting picked up into single point. Okay, Annie, you can go back.
Awesome, let me. So we'll be talking about pre-court diversions. So where are youth are kind of sent after single point? And so what are some of the services in that kind of continuum there and options? So there are three main avenues of pre-court diversions where youth are sent. This is kind of determined following single point. So there is administrative pre-court diversion, unsupervised. You know, youth are basically sent home essentially saying, okay, folks in your family, schools, if anything comes up on the radar, that's it, we're bringing the case up. However, you know, the understanding being that if the youth stays, you know, in good standing, everything kind of goes away, the case sort of evaporates. Then there's, the same things apply for the latter two as well. These are slightly more, they kind of incrementally go up in severity. Administrative pre-court diversion supervised, this is under DFS care, typically between 90 and 180 days. So this is, you know, an administrative probation. The youth is signed a supervising agent through DFS and that, you know, follows a very similar arrangement. If you violate any of the terms of probation, a court case is going to be filed. But if you do well, everything kind of, you know, this, the case won't be filed. It all gets sort of dismissed from your record and no one can kind of bring it up again. Similarly, then there's administrative pre-court diversion supervised with a juvenile probation agent. And this is, you know, this treated like a little bit more severely, right? If there was a charge and a completed case, you know, this is sort of where the youth would go. But it's essentially kind of bumped back down saying, okay, we're going to have it unsup, or we're going to have it supervised by an agent. But with more, usually more sort of services lined up for them. They, you know, make sure that they're attending schools, that they're behaving properly in the home. They, you know, may be subject to your analysis test, things like that. So they're observed a little bit more at a higher degree.
Yeah, do you want to? Uh, this is just a quick breakdown of the disposition of cases that come through single entry. So to Annie's point, they can either choose to file the case in the, in the original court or send it to juvenile court. But the, the options kind of for unsupervised and supervised probation get applied to about 18% of kids in total. So on average, about 8% of kids are sent to unsupervised administrative probation. Another 3% get supervised through DFS and that, and then 7% go to the Sweetwater County pre-court diversion, which is through the probation department. Those kids is, that 7% comes out to about 40 kids a year who get pre-court diversion. And that has shrunk a little bit in the last couple of years, just from some other budget cuts on services and staffing. But on average, the kids who are getting pre-court diversion through probation, it's about 70% high school aged kids and about 30% middle school aged kids. It's about two-thirds male, which lines up with the crime rate and about four and five are white, which lines up with the crime rate. So it's fairly proportional to who's coming into single point. Oh, that's back to you.
So essentially, the, the reason why you kind of seek these pre-court diversions is to use least force possible to drive the most amount of behavioral change. So rather than kind of saying, okay, you got to get out of here, you're going to detention or something like that. They, they set up these pre-court diversions to really kind of meet some of the causes and some of the behaviors directly that the youth is experiencing. So, you know, making sure that they're actually attending class instead of being truant or, or, you know, skipping class and things like that, making sure that they are following the rules at home. And so, you know, it, the pre-court diversions have been less successful, generally quite successful for kids who are, and families who are already sort of inclined to be able to say, okay, this was a one misstep. We're going to sort of right the behavior, it'll be okay. But less successful for families who show some defiance and some opposition to the system. And, and a lot of the folks that we talked to in probation and DFS probation, county probation elsewhere, you know, discussed a lot of issues with families, especially families who have themselves been in the system. And the old system was a lot more punitive, you would get taken away, you would get put somewhere. And so there's a lot of mistrust in families that the system is actually looking out for them, that probation agents really do want to help them. So there is that sort of barrier there. There are unfortunately few community resources to send youth for these pre-court diversions. This has kind of been noted over and over again. This is a very common theme when we talk to folks in different agencies across the board, that just what is there does not necessarily have adequate capacity to receive youth and families. And then programs that have existed in the past have sort of evaporated and gone away without anything to kind of take their place. So we have some quotes on that, but we'll kind of delve into what actually is sort of there. For instance, many youth are required to do behavioral health assessments, sort of see where they're at, how they're kind of, you know, raking up on certain, you know, substance abuse issues, behavioral health, mental problems, things like that. And so they're required usually as they sort of move through the system, an MDT, a multidisciplinary team of different professionals in the community, you know, advocates from Southwest Counseling who can read behavioral health assessments, and then school counselors, school social workers, lots of different folks get together and recommend different assessments for youth to be able to receive. So we do have, you know, there are lots of services the DFS and the local schools utilize. We've got them sort of listed out here. Behavioral health assessments can be incredibly costly for families. And so that's certainly a barrier there unless a child is a child in need of supervision's case, a chin's case, where they are under DFS care and they're immediately able to receive Medicaid since they're under their custody. But if you go out of pocket or if you are not a DFS case, it can be incredibly costly for families to do these assessments. And oftentimes what we've heard from different agents is that who they go to see in the community will often recommend the level of treatment that they offer. So, you know, we've got a quote a little bit that speaks to that. You know, a kid who gets a substance abuse evaluation at ABC will almost always come out with a level one because that's what they provide, similarly for some of the other agencies in town. Southwest Counseling does have many resources for youth and families, but unfortunately a rather poor reputation in the community. It's not necessarily a trusted community resource. Parents have found scheduling appointments to be incredibly frustrating. You have to work, you have to do sort of exactly three weeks out, call Monday by noon. If that is not, if that doesn't happen or if it's delayed at all, you are not going to receive services in that three-week window. Or certainly not going to be able to get the appointment time that fits your family needs and your structure. There are also sort of time sensitive demands about getting one of those behavioral health assessments. Those are walk-in only. And so you have to be there essentially at noon, the hours I think are, what did I? One P, sorry, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM only for walk-ins. And you might not be seen that day. So the, these are real needs in the community that we've heard have been very big challenges for probation agents and others to kind of help families along with. So we've also seen that a lot of services that have been available tend to cease when those providers leave. So if a provider offers an excellent, you know, family therapy service, but then they leave after a few years, there is really no replacement there. And so there can be, and sometimes very lengthy gaps between when they hire a new provider, a new clinician to come in and offer these services. And it's usually not the same, so they kind of have to rebuild reputation, rebuild awareness that, hey, there's new services available, come and make use of that. So we do have this local continuum of non-secure services, essentially where, where youth go that is not detention and isn't, you know, not necessarily like a lockdown facility, but places to, to have youth receive the, the care that they need. One of the major issues that we have seen and have heard from a lot of folks in the community is that youth cases that, that come up are more complex. It's not just sort of the one marijuana violation or something like that. What happens is they're brought up to single point. Folks talk about, okay, well, we've seen them over here for this and then, you know, school councils will bring up this. Suddenly you're at the tip of the iceberg, you scratch the surface and now you realize that these, this youth has been sort of spiraling. And so many more things are discovered, they have to kind of address these in succession as well. One, so there are services that youth can go. Families have relied pretty heavily on the youth home for very temporary crisis placement. This is, this is not a treatment facility. This is basically just a group home that a youth can go to and attend for up to 30 days. That is just sort of a safe place to be, you're with other youth, you're talking with other folks in the community, but you're not receiving treatment necessarily. This, they use the Boys Town model where you can kind of gain points and, you know, do things as, you know, bettering your behavior. You can kind of work together with other folks. And so it does address some behavior problems, but not in a, in a treatment sort of way. Youth, and there is a brand new executive director there who has a really wide array of things that they want to kind of spearhead and really sort of implement to actually make this more of a service to the community. And especially a kind of step-down plan that they want to realize so that youth are kind of more ready to go back into their home environment. But what we found is that because there is no residential treatment facility available for youth in Sweetwater, they really have to go out, they have to travel far away to different cities, sometimes even out of state. And that can really, really mount up the challenges for the families face. There's certainly the state-run facilities by DFS, there's the Wyoming Boys School and the Girls School. So these are being relied on pretty heavily to address delinquent youth. But again, out there far. So there are lots of other residential treatment facilities in Wyoming, but for much more serious needs, youth are being sent out of state altogether. So we've seen different facilities that folks have relied on recently is Meadowlark, Chrysalis Cathedral Home, in-state psychiatric residential treatment facilities, the YBI, the Wyoming, WBI, Wyoming Behavioral Institute. There are others listed, but this was the only one consistently mentioned by every interviewee that I talked to. And so it really seems like the perception is this is the only actual psychiatric resident treatment facility that youth are referred to. There are others out of state and then of course, as, as behaviors ramp up, if any of these youth are exhibiting like violent behavior, they have to go to detention. These facilities cannot really handle that. One of the things that we heard is the sexual aggression cases. They're not that common, but they incur the highest level of risk. And there are no services in the county or in the state to address that. And so youth are being sent to Utah, there's the No Joes Network on juveniles obtaining safety that sees these youth. But it is, it is a growing need and definitely a growing concern with folks that we talked to. One of the major issues that was identified is that there is really no step-down resource available. So when a youth does go out to these treatment facilities, when their treatment ends, they just sort of go home, they go back to school, they go back to their home environment. They can, and we've, we heard a lot that they can do incredibly well at these facilities. They could be model citizens essentially. But when trying to return back home, you're back in that environment, back in that sort of unhealthy, unstable place. And there's really no continuity of therapy or behavior checks outside of, you know, a DFS agent or probation agent checking in on you that, that maintain that kind of behavior and can help kids reintegrate back into the community. And certainly not addressing the parents while the youth is away. They have to kind of seek that independently. There are, for instance, Meadowlark does have case management for up to six months following that, but this is an incredibly expensive private provider. And so they're, you know, for the most at need, the, the low-cost options really aren't there. Oh, and one of the other interesting things is youth who try to kind of continue at Southwest Counseling have an additional barrier. So these are, you know, kids often on low income, they have a sliding scale, but they cannot be seen until they are back in the community. So you cannot establish that continuity of care until you are back here. And scheduling is, you know, that three-week minimum. So that can be a, a major barrier to receiving services. So that's kind of for youth in the system, that was the continuum, continuum of, of services available. Now let's talk a little bit about our at-risk youth and what's sort of available there. School districts are truly the place that everybody kind of looks to first. Parents look to them, they're still a very trusted resource in the community. They look to the school counselors and the social workers and the caseworkers for recommendations of where to go, what sort of services to receive. And districts do have funding, the BOCES Region Five that runs the Roosevelt or that, that funds the Roosevelt School, there is some support there as well. And schools have certainly moved away from more of the punitive models of justice. So instead of suspending youth or expelling youth and saying, no, 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 you can't attend. Now they do want more attendance. So there is a lot more focus on keeping kids in school, keeping those behaviors in check. However, this has really had a pretty disastrous impact on counselors who are kind of expected to absorb a lot more of these behavioral managerial functions. School officials really noted that attendance has been of huge difficulty for them going forward and that they have little resources to address mental health crises, like real true resources to address crises. Youth may go to a hospital for, you know, quick care if, you know, they have suicidal ideation or something like that. They have a 72-hour hold, then they're immediately back at school and the counselors kind of have to step into that role of checking in on them, making sure that, okay, well, what, what do we have to do? These are not necessarily things that they had been trained to do in the school counselor capacity. So they would like additional sort of trainings or at least sort of direction there. A fantastic point of resource in the community. School District Two has received lots of funding recently to expand their school-based wellness therapy program. They've built off-site therapy services with actual family counselors. And so that has been absolutely excellent. We've, we've heard nothing but fantastic things about that. They've also They've also received the TIS grant for trauma-informed care services. And so they've really expanded that recently and they're advertising that clearly. There's a lot of, they're doing a lot to raise awareness that we have these services. It's front and center on the School District Two banner. You know, hey, we've got social mental wellness here. Here are all the resources that you can utilize. Even so, still counselors did express a desire for more resources aimed at juvenile substance abuse. School District One has more challenges. They, something interesting that counselors pointed out was that they had the additional sort of challenge of an additional gap in school. So instead of the three kind of buckets of elementary, middle and high that you go to, there is an added break. So K through three, four through six, seven through eight, nine through 10. So there's one more jump there. Kids can develop excellent rapport with a school counselor, but then you're all of a sudden in a brand new building with a new counselor and there is no continuity there. So one of the things that they've recognized as a problem is building that continuity between counselors, but they would like more support, even, you know, a little pool of funding so they can meet, meet a week prior before school as counselors and talk about their cases together and do a handoff, even bringing in the youth to do that handoff together and say, no, 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 this person is aware of you. They know you, you can continue on. There is sort of an interesting kind of fact here that they, they, School District One also has a TIS grant, but it's not terribly advertised. So if you try to kind of look for where those services are, you're not really going to find them. Folks we talked to said that the community is likely not aware of what those services entail for District One too. So just talking about what the resources are there, bringing up that awareness can really help get kids into the right places. Unfortunately, everyone we talked to feels incredibly overwhelmed in their capacity. We have sort of already mentioned the counselors. But school resource officers who are, you know, the police on campus that, that interface a lot with the youth, especially in these, you know, juvenile justice sort of way, feel overwhelmed, probation agents feel overwhelmed. They have not had any added funding in years and most often budgets are sort of cut over time and again. And so what has happened is this kind of bleed, sort of, everybody feels like they're covering several different jobs. Jobs that may have been cut in the past and nobody has sort of replaced them in the community. So for instance, counselors kind of feel like they are diagnosticians. They are school psychologists, they are occupational therapists and all, and on and on and on. And so really trying to feel like they need to be capable in their jobs as counselors has become incredibly difficult. DFS similarly feels that they're being called on more and more for things that they believe teachers or counselors should take care of, checking in on the home environments, keeping logs of, you know, how many times they've reached out to family. But everybody we talked to on the school side is overwhelmed and they're, they're already trying to do this. And so there is, it's creating this kind of intra-agency strife. In terms of the commute, of continuum, continuum of what sort of services are available for at-risk youth, we've seen the same kind of thing happen. Oh, time and time again, services have disappeared without being brought back. So folks mentioned, you know, having like camp feet lost funding. That's sort of this kind of semi-structured, semi-supervised recreational summer camp. They was an excellent place for kids to be rather than just sort of alone at home with nothing to do. After-school programming has also kind of had its ups and downs. Life Are You Ready was mentioned by some of the officers, the police officers, as well as the sheriff's department is, and some of the probation agents. This is like an excellent resource. They would come into the schools, they would talk about, you know, this is what happens with, you know, if you do drugs or if you drive high or anything like that, a little bit of, you know, the scare tactic, but they, they felt that it really kind of reached the kids. Certain other things like the District One truancy program and having a truancy officer on campus to make sure kids are attending class, that's gone away. That hasn't been back. So these sorts of things that would catch the at-risk youth have evaporated. What does sort of exist has been a little bit on the too expensive side and seems to be growing. So the Boys and Girls Club, people often mention like, well, I think that's, I think that's around. I don't know anybody uses it, seems to be really expensive. Or families have a difficult time transporting their children to go receive those resources. And similarly, the, the Roosevelt Learning Centers where sort of very high-risk, high-need behavioral health cases go for very, very close one-on-one attention in a classroom setting. But it is incredibly expensive to the district. Lots of workforce challenges and inflation have just made it very difficult for families, at-risk families to receive the services and the care that they need. This, you know, we just kind of heard this across the board. Families are just working more, they are much more absent as parents because parents will be working several different jobs. Some, you know, and depending on the industry that they're working in, they may not even be present in the home for weeks at a time. And youth are kind of left on their own to sort of fend for themselves. And there's just a little animosity there and, you know, parents will say like, well, you know, my kid can go work, get $20 an hour, why are they bothering with school? And so, you know, pushback when probation agents say, no, 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 you got to attend school. So there are some of these kind of community issues and, and perception that are factoring into it as well. Everybody really wanted engagement with the family. So making sure that the families are truly engaged with the probation agents, making sure that they're complying, that they themselves are going and receiving some of the services that they're referred to. And, and this kind of really hits the meat of what we mean with at-risk youth. Earlier and earlier, they're pushing it back to more, because if you wait more and more, you see these extra complex cases develop. So bringing it back to really addressing at-risk at the middle school age group. They want to see a lot more services aimed at that. Anything kind of addressing absenteeism and truancy at the middle school level, getting kids on the juvenile justice radar even sooner can help address some of those things. Make sure that they're diverting them into the services that they really need. And then addressing those parents in that at-risk category, making sure that they have parenting classes, life skills classes, things like that, those kinds of options available as well. And probation agents certainly would like more tools to address youth even earlier. As we mentioned, kind of budget cuts have really prevented them from receiving any kind of annual trainings. One of them mentioned that, you know, there are these excellent annual conferences that we could go to. We have no budget for that. Conferences that especially do address how juvenile justice has changed in rural areas. So they would love to know more about that and be a better resource through being able to get those trainings. And there are other sort of factors involved that they would like to see addressed. A lot of youth are kind of bumped back to do like community service and things like that. But there are some structures in place to make that very difficult. If youth are under 13, they can't receive workman's comp. So they can't really attend community service, even though it's recommended. And it just sort of goes away as a recommendation. Ultimately, nothing happens. And then a juvenile drug court option would also, it was something that a lot of folks talked about. That's been excellent for adults, but having that for youth as well, because they are seeing a lot more substance use issues crop up. And then having districts and DFS working together even a little more closely. They've really, really forged ahead and developed good relationships. But they want to, they want to enhance that certainly. And so what they think might help, and this is kind of in the realm of brainstorming suggestions, but being able to create some kind of informational report or even having a DFS liaison, someone to get some, some kind of knowledge of a kid on the record and saying like, hey, DFS, be aware that this might be an issue coming up. Rather than having to kind of scramble and get all of that data once a case is actually filed. So sort of a informational report saying like, watch out for these folks. They're having some issues without necessarily filing a formal case. And this liaison function could kind of be, you know, a prevention specialist or a family system specialist, someone who isn't overwhelmed with caseload to actually kind of be that interim person.
Annie, can I interrupt you real quick? This is wonderful information and I appreciate, you know, the detail you're giving us. We are a little bit over ahead of schedule and so I'm trying to be respectful of the other presenter's time. We have a couple of issues to deal with. And then we have to adjourn this meeting and start another one at 12:15. So I want to give you some time. I wasn't sure how much longer you, you might have on this presentation. I don't want to cut you too short, but we still have a lot to get through and so.
This is actually kind of like the final thing that I wanted to mention from my deck. But the, the school resource officers would, would really appreciate that kind of cross-training with school counselors so that they can on the ground address any kind of severe crisis that emerges with a kid rather than saying, gee, I'm sorry, you're going through a really tough time, you're just going to have to wait until a counselor is available because the counselors are in the classroom, they're trying to have their own hours, all these sorts of things. And that's all, but thank you so much for the warning.
Of course. Well, now I feel bad.
I wouldn't have done that.
No worries. Okay. Lot of information, believe it or not, there's actually even more in the full report. It's very exciting. But we thought before we end, real quick, I just want to zoom back out for a second and think about, you know, the biggest, the key takeaways from all of that information. And I will do it fast. Okay, single point of entry, good. It's viewed as efficient and instrumental. It's able to, you know, really address a young person's unique experience, thinking about, you know, all of the different circumstances and factors that may have led them to this point. So, you know, it's good, it's, it's ensuring that youth are receiving those sort of lower level interventions. Two. Youth offenses, again, as Annie was mentioning, are most often noted first at the school level through these counselors or these school resource officers. You know, they are interacting with young people on a daily basis, maybe able to catch sort of behavioral patterns instead of an outright crime against society or another person or property. SROs can bring citations forward and again, just put youth on the radar of the juvenile justice system, which is huge and goes a long way before, you know, behaviors become so disruptive or so severe that more intense action must be taken for that child. Okay, so again, addressing youth offenses early, key to, you know, sort of diverting them to the right place, but also again, sort of putting the kibosh on that behavior at an early stage before it gets so complicated and, and so challenging to address. Notable that there are, you know, big differences in how youth are put on the juvenile justice system in Green River versus Rock Springs and those school districts that are centered there. More kids in Rock Springs are getting citations in comparison to those in Green River. And, you know, there, there are demographic and economic differences between those two cities. But there are also just some policy differences, some things that are not implemented exactly the same across the board, and this can also have a, an effect on this. Also just a perception in general, sort of a cultural idea that maybe Green River doesn't have the same problems as Rock Springs. Might be true, might not be true, you know? But this perception itself, which may, you know, that, this, this is enough to cause officials to potentially minimize certain juvenile offenses, if that is the prevailing thought. Precourt diversions, several of them are in place to address issues with young people. But again, the complexity of cases is really on the rise here. You, you know, you might have a child that got busted for smoking marijuana, but also has, you know, a traumatic brain injury and a challenging home life and is experiencing poverty. All these different factors coming together and coalescing can create for a really difficult time in figuring out how do we move forward? What do we address? How do we help this child in the best and most holistic way possible? Yeah, again, that tip of the iceberg metaphor I think is really relevant here. And again, you know, addressing these challenges early, but also with adequate family engagement and support is key to, you know, ensure that these children are going to be set up for longer than just the time that they are in contact with the system. Current services offered in the community are struggling to address specifically this growing complexity in cases. And social services are constantly being asked to do more with less. As resources dwindle, as funding dries up, as different services are experiencing budget cuts or work staff turnover, things like this. You know, it's really challenging for people that are still in these positions and wanting to help children, but perhaps with less time, with less money, with less resources and overall. And, and these capacity issues are negatively affecting families as well. Because again, without local services, many families might send their children farther away, out of state perhaps, you know? It's a last resort, but you know, they, these children are then expected to return to their homes and their communities with no, with not the same level of, of care or supervision. Nothing really like as a step down from that before they just go back to doing what they were doing before, perhaps. So some of the things that interviewees who are noting is wanting to really see the addition of more services aimed at families. This can be things like mandatory parenting classes or life skills support, things of that nature, in order to ensure stable family environments for children to return to where they can excel and really, you know, build on the skills that they learned, perhaps change some habits, things of this nature. But there's a problem there because a lot of families don't necessarily trust the, these kinds of services due to their own past experience within the system when they were children or even just like, you know, stigma surrounding treatment in general. That's a real, a real cultural force at play here. And, you know, young people also need behavioral health services that are accessible to them and their families. Even things like complicated scheduling processes or high costs or, you know, you absolutely have to have internet access in order to complete these steps or schedule this appointment. These can all present really high walls for, for people to have to cross in order to get care that they need. There are, again, a few services available for at-risk youth, kids that are not perhaps in the system already, but could be. And many, but many programs that are aimed at preventions, again, that Life Are You Ready, various summer schools, after-school programming have ended and nothing has come in to fill that gap. There is now just a hole there where something used to be there and used to be great, greatly helpful, but now there's nothing. And again, a lot of the programs that remain are often too expensive for families anyways. So the, the care and attention to at-risk youth, sort of the preventative side of things is an area that is sort of lacking a little bit right now. Finally, I believe, to begin addressing barriers for both at-risk youth and youth already in the system, interviewees, again, across a wide variety of services and professions, noted that, you know, they want to see key amounts of funding to supplemental trainings. So trainings for probation agents or school counselors that are now asked to deal with these very, very complex issues or school resource officers that are sometimes filling that gaps when the counselors are completely maxed out and at their capacity. You know, School District Two has had really great success in leveraging funding for those behavioral health resources as a way to sort of better assist kids, both those that are at risk, kids in general, kids that have already had contact with the system. And similar services and awareness can happen in District One as well. It's just when, when those key amounts of funding come in, where do we put them? And a lot of the interviewees noted trainings, you know, making sure that people are prepared for the job at hand. And that is the end of our presentation.
Well, we appreciate you guys condensing it down. I know you'd ask for a longer amount of time, so I, I didn't mean to be critical there. We're just very difficult to keep everything on task up here. So it's very important information and it's honestly very troubling. I mean, I have all kinds of notes, so please do, you know, send that full version of the presentation so we can sort through that. There's quite a few that stuck out to me that, right off the bat, one of them was, I believe you mentioned middle school and high school. You know, there was one in five considering suicide and one in eight that attempted. I mean, that's huge for, you know, 5,000, I think, or 4,800, I believe is what you alluded to. In that 12 to 17 year range. And there's various other, you know, statistics that are troublesome with that. So we appreciate this assessment and, you know, hope to be able to work together with the, you know, community partners to try and make some form of a difference. I know everyone speaks about it, but they don't speak enough about it. And, you know, without having an assessment on providing a path to actually, you know, work towards some of this. I don't know if, if success is the word, but at least, you know, some form of change I think is incredibly crucial to turning some of these statistics around. I don't, I mean, I know this needs assessment was with the county on behalf of us, but I think it'd be very beneficial to present it to the school districts. I mean, many of what you spoke about was school counseling and, you know, obviously school-related issues. So I don't know if that's an opportunity, and obviously they would have to welcome that too. But I mean, anything that we can provide awareness for, and you know, obviously it's always a financial burden and everyone likes to, you know, blame it on budget cuts and things of that nature. And we hate hearing that as politicians. And although there is some truth to that, you know, the fact of the matter is something needs to be done. And so I think, you know, all of us would be in favor of anything we can do to help support that. I know the drug court has been successful. I think you mentioned, you know, the idea of a juvenile drug court option. And, you know, maybe that's something that needs to be looked into because I hate hearing that. You know, I think it was 9% of kids have a. you know, I think it was nine percent of kids have a some form of a substance abuse problem. Five hundred out of five thousand, that's pretty alarming. So. Is there any other comments, questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slatter.
If I could, as usual, you, you jumped on one of the first things that I was going to ask and, and it really stood out to me too. When you talk about one in five kids can, that are considering suicide, one in eight have tried it. But my question is, is for possibly maybe Karen or maybe Cindy or Alan. This needs assessment was really done to help the Community Juvenile Services Board develop a strategic plan. So how are you implementing that? And, and has it been beneficial? Are you currently doing that now with this needs assessment? It, it is, I mean, very, it, it's troubling. And I hate to make light of something when, when we talk about things that are as serious as they are, but you have to take advantage of the opportunities when you have them. And I, I just felt that something that Annie talked about was very important for all of us to understand. We have issues with our commission chair. And it's probably because he's from the metro environment or as I'm from the Green River environment. And I just think that that's important for us to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew that. That's that Green River, Rock Springs. We just can't get away from it, you know. And, you know, certainly some of those statistics, I mean, you, you kind of mentioned, obviously some is going to be population-based, but I mean, there's different communities doing different things and having different, you know, regulations, whether that's ordinance-based or, or whatever, but I think collectively, especially as a county, you know, we want to focus on all areas regardless of who's metro and, and who's urban on it because it's, it's a bigger picture than that and it's alarming. I mean, it's, it's tough to see.
And don't forget rural.
Yeah, we got a real rural one over here. Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you all very much. And I apologize for trying to keep things on task. It was very, very well put together presentation and I know you had more than that to deliver, so. We appreciate everything you put forth and we'll look forward to learning more and what we can do to help make a difference.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, that does move us right along and conclude the regular action and presentation items of the agenda. Next up, we do have an executive session to discuss personnel and real estate. We don't anticipate taking action, but we won't know until we come out. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. We're now in executive.